Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 10th Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole. It is 6:35. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Overy, who notified that she is unavailable this evening. Calendar and Communications. Councilor Baumgartner?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Parker?
Can we, just the emails that we received and reviewed?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Emails we received as councilors and reviewed. I have reviewed them.
Thank you. Councilor Franco?
Some emails with some constituents and some phone calls and the Economic Development Committee meeting. And they are going to be having a community meeting, and I don't exactly have the date, but I'll try and... Do you have that by any chance, John? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
The EDC meeting?
Yes.
If you give me a second.
March 30th?
Okay.
Thank you. And it's going to be for the community of businesses to come out and hear on the Plastics Ordinance and more explanation if they need it and discussions on potentials on how to get the supplies and how to find the supplies affordably for businesses in our community.
Very good.
And more.
No things to report.
Council Boardland?
Just the communications from constituents that people have received. One in particular from Richard Fitzgerald, which looks like we got a copy of this for our record here, looking at the response, citizens' comments, just maybe possibly a referral to Rules Committee, I'm thinking, at some point.
Council Melendez?
I am happy to report that Children First Grind has received a grant for $20,600. And there's a potentially larger grant that they're looking to get in a few months as well.
Very nice. Councilors Perry?
I was contacted by one of our citizens who was concerned about the parking lot at Paquannic Plains. It's filled with ruts and potholes, and they were concerned, they felt that we should be doing more about it. I have gone through there a number of times myself and have had, and I see what they're talking about, and I can't get my pen to work. But anyway, it's, it's, it's worth paying some attention to.
Mr. Burke?
Just to mention, they do every spring before one of their festivals, they do bring in gravel and regrade it. Part of the problem is, if you notice out there, it's extremely wet and it just tears it up. It's going to be an ongoing issue, but they do redo it every year.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Councilors Perry, anything else you wanted to report?
No, thank you very much.
Let's see. I had a conversation with a constituent about the North Stonington Road Bridge, who requested that I contact the first selectman in Stonington, and I did so, and we had a conversation about some options. And we'll be discussing that when we get to budget time. I had a meeting with the constituent who was very concerned about road paving, and we took a look at the old MAC Tech study, and we're going to be looking at the new study, which should be coming out within a week or two, we hope.
They're hoping Friday.
Friday, great. And then, do you have news on the Groton sale land for us?
Not yet. The meeting was canceled this month because of the chairman's passing. I'm meeting with a few of the members, I believe it's Friday, coming up, it's either Friday or Monday, with Mary Ann Galbraith, Mark Ofinger, and Jim Streeter to talk about some, the process moving forward. So I'm anticipating they will have the regular meeting this month.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to throw it back to you as well. As you probably all are aware, the governor declared a state of emergency regarding public health in relation to COVID-19, and the manager has been having meetings with Legulite Health District, with the various town departments, and I guess there's a big conference call tomorrow. So could you just update us on where we are with town? Thanks, please.
Sure. It's taken up quite a bit of time the last couple of days, and I anticipate tomorrow, too. First of all, everyone probably saw the governor declared a state of public health emergency today. At this point, you know, we're that elite, I don't know, but at this point, it's more about, it triggers price gouging laws so that you can't ramp up the prices too much, as well as puts the travel industry on notice about their insurance companies, that they make sure they follow all the terms of their policies for canceled trips. I'm regularly talking to Steve Mansfield, the director of Legulite. Of course, all this is fluid, you know, we're going to have to evolve as it evolves. But we had Stephen at the department head meeting this morning. We spent about hour fielding, he fielded questions from department heads, on what's going on, how to handle things. We have Legulite coming back tomorrow to do a presentation at a larger meeting. It's a larger than even a management team meeting, kind of any staff that has any interest or, you know, that department heads think might need to hear the information. We have everybody going there. We also invited fire, all the local fire departments. I reached out to Mayor Hedrick, and they have their own presentation that already happened or coming up. Legulite, though, is wrapping up what they're doing for presentations, not doing anymore because they are going to start restricting large gatherings. And I've been in regular contact with Mayor Hedrick, too, just to make sure we're on the same page. Right now, overall, at this point, now, I know the Health Department thinks things will be quite a bit different by next week, you know, likely to ramp up more. Right now, it's status quo. If we start getting into something happening in terms of staff, it's regular sick policies, either normal as you go, and if it becomes more of an issue, it'd be more of a, like an extended extreme snow day. We'd have to look at, you know, if you had, couldn't operate with it, if you didn't even have a skeleton crew. We've been trying to buy, I wanted to buy, when SARS came out, we bought hand sanitizers to put all over the place I was with. We cannot, we cannot find hand sanitizer or wipes. We've been checking everywhere. So we're continuing to look. I wanted to put them out everywhere, but it's not going to work. I am canceling, though, the, we had a senior center bake-off planned for this Saturday that is going to be rescheduled. We were monitoring in terms of the Mystic 5K a week from Sunday. We'll give it in a couple of days, but there's a good chance of that being rescheduled. So I'll, you know, keep you aware of that. In terms of something to be on the radars of the budget, public hearing on the 26th, you, in terms, in order to be a public meeting, whether it's any, any council or the public hearing, you cannot restrict the public from going. We can encourage them not to go and offer some other ways. Hey, here's an email address, please submit your comments. We'll read them, you know, live at the meeting if you don't want to go. Maybe social media there reading live comments, maybe the phone line. So we're still considering those options, and as we get closer, we'll figure that out. Betsy and the Register of Deeds, they're not Register of Deeds, and the registrars are talking about voting, looking at what's happening with that. Secretary of State is recommending getting agreements in place between towns to help each other if needed. So Betsy's looking at that. She's looking for a sample agreement. And there's, there's already a plan in place for any sickness that goes on or any catastrophe where you'd basically vote for curbside voting. So there is some contingencies in place. So as that evolves, obviously keep you updated. Michael Whitehouse would, on behalf of Rotary, reached out to me this morning, asking about delivering food, if there was a quarantine at some point, if somebody had self-quarantined and didn't have access to food, they offered to make deliveries. I talked to Human Services, they're willing to put food packages together, so we'll, we'll track that as things evolve. And in terms of emergency services, one of our biggest fears is, you know, dispatch centers, not many employees type space, what happens if we get a couple of them out? We're going to, we're looking at maybe reaching out to, you're trying to figure out what's, you know, if we had to evolve the hours that aren't currently allowed, reaching out to the union in advance to have some agreements in place that respond to an emergency. And we are doing a test activation of our Emergency Operations Center on Monday, just to make sure everything's working correctly and ready to go if need be. And then, this is not definite yet. I know the Mystic Parade Committee's meeting tonight to make a decision. I hear they're leaning towards rescheduling, but that will come out sometime tonight. So that's what I have.
So the Emergency Operations Center test, that is not going to impact the public at all, correct?
No.
Okay. So you shouldn't hear anything?
We're not sending messages out or anything else, I think.
Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
As far as I know.
Yeah. All right. Very good. Councilors Perry?
I'd like to express my gratitude to you personally for staying ahead of the curve on this issue.
Well, I, you know, Health Department's been fantastic, and I know Steve's running around like a madman, so, and then all our staff are well aware of what's happening and offering suggestions.
Okay. Council Boardland?
And is there any extra cleaning being done in the public facility such as this? These tables, these doors?
Greg Hanover, the Public Works Director, he's been discussing extra cleaning with Blackburn, our cleaning company. They're going to ramp up cleaning, do extra cleaning. So I, no charge even. They actually volunteered. So I know, he's been working with them on that.
Thank you. Okay. We are on to item number four, Approval of Minutes, 202165. The minutes are February 25th, 2020. This is on page two. And Councilor Baumgartner, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of February 25th, 2020. So moved?
Second? Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Boardland. Is there discussion on the minutes? Give everybody a chance to take a look through. Council Boardland?
I just want to say that these look like they cover a lot more of the detail than depict some of the concerns I had in the past, so I do appreciate that.
Council Franco? No. Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone else? Okay, so no further discussion. All those in favor of 202165, approval of the February 25th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. So unanimously, we are eight councilors. Thank you. We are on to item 5A, 202156, Passenger Train Service Expansion Presentation. There is a note on page 16. There's no motion prepared in advance, but Mr. Steever, if you'd like to come up, please. He has left at each place setting a presentation, and there will be one of these entered into the record as well for the public. You'll be able to see this online with the minutes for this evening. Mr. Steever, just remind, please use a microphone that way you're captured for the viewing audience. I think you can, if you want to walk around, you can take it out, I think. Are those removable? Mr. Burke, yes? Yes. Okay. Talk again, and Mr. Greeley can tell us if it's working or not. Please.
Are you on now?
Keep going. He's, he's trying to get your voice regulated, so talk into it, please.
How's this?
It's good, he said.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Zell Steever, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about train service for Groton and for the entire region of southeastern Connecticut. Before I start, I think I probably should tell you how I got involved with this exercise. Help start at the beginning. Four years ago, I got involved with the then zoning commission, now the Planning and Zoning Commission, to work on the revised regulations for the town. And at the time, they were looking at mixed-use development and where that might be appropriate in the town of Groton. And they finally landed on looking at that whole area on Route 1, familiar as many people by Hamburger Hill, as it's so-called, which is a bit disingenuous, but nevertheless, it's that area in town that runs up along from the shopping center up the hill. And so I got involved with looking at the whole issue of how does this mixed-use development really work? And that led to conversations with the planning commission, of which there were, I mean, the zoning commission, which there were a number of them. And I finally stumbled upon this notion of these mixed-use communities work when you have public transportation close at hand. And that was the transit-oriented development concept, which I believe I made a presentation to you almost a year ago and handed out a copy of a booklet about that work that was done. So I worked up until the regulations were passed last fall, and as you all know, they're now in place. And in fact, we have mixed-use development along that corridor now. And then, the final map was finally produced in January of this year. And so while I'm not a transportation person, except I know how to drive a car, and I know how to ride the train, and I'm, I'm a little bit out of my element in terms of my expertise, but nevertheless, I've had a really interesting time learning about transportation, how's my work. And what became obvious to me is that running right along parallel with Route 1 is the Amtrak line that is to the south of Route 1 that runs for about a mile through the center of Groton. And it just dawned on me, well, okay, we've got mixed use, and if we could somehow get a train stopping in Groton, then we could maybe then call this transit-oriented development. And it became clear that if we did call it transit-oriented development, the town of Groton would get priority funding for certain kinds of projects, because the state is very keen on this whole notion. So I'm going to go through this presentation. I have provided you with a handout, and there, it's a fairly long handout. There's four pages up front about just really a written narrative to the council, followed by two maps. I apologize, they're upside down, but sometimes our local printers don't get it right. But that's followed then by a more detailed outline of the presentation tonight that I'm going to give you on the screen here, because one of my pet peeves is having overload on the screen and we can't read it. So hopefully you can read this thing, and we'll go forward here. So right now, we have Shoreline, we have two train services in the region. We have the, we have the Amtrak, which runs up and down the coast, and you all know about that. It stops in New Haven, it stops sometimes in New London, and then goes on to Providence and beyond. And it's really, really, really a regional train service, and it doesn't really have much value to the town, because it doesn't stop here. You have to go to New London to get it, and then it doesn't happen all the time, and it's all turns, turns out to be quite expensive. But nevertheless, that's the one system. And on top of those tracks, the state of Connecticut operates what's called Shoreline East, the SLE. And it's a 80, a 68-mile run basically from New Haven to New London. And it stops in nine communities. Those listed on there starts in New London, or actually starts the other way, but New London, Saybrook, Westbrook, Clinton, Madison, Brantford, Guilford, New Haven, State Street, and New Haven, Union Station. It makes roughly 18 trips, round trips, from the old Saybrook Station to New Haven, but only makes three or four stops from, from New London. So often, I find myself having to drive all the way to, to Old Saybrook to pick up the train to go to New York City. And so that's sort of the, the situation we're faced with right now. Now, it was basically set up by the state. It was established to basically provide a trail, a train service for the shoreline of Connecticut. At its peak, it was operating around 600,000 passengers a year. In the downturn in 2011, that dropped dramatically, and I guess at about a half. Now, I've tried to get that number exactly, and it's been a little difficult to do, but what I have found out is that this last year, or whatever that percentage is, it was up 3% from last year. So there's some progress going the other way. Some of the delay, or some of the downturn in the ridership had to do with the delays in construction on the Amtrak rail. And it ends in New London. We had no service to Groton, Stonington, or to Rhode Island. And it does basically, there is no shoreline service from New Haven to Providence, which is basically only 114 miles down the track. So if we now look at this photograph, that aerial photograph of our, of our area, I think you probably all recognize exactly where we are here. This is the Gold Star Bridge. And the air photo shows the black line here is Amtrak running around like this. And you also notice that on the west side of the river, there's a track that runs down and connects up to this, also connects up to the state pier on the west side. Now, many of you may not realize, but there's also a train system or train service that runs down the east side, comes down to right at the intersection of where 95 goes across, and one set of tracks goes this way, and one set of tracks goes east. Now, if you ever looked over in this region right through here, you'll notice that there's not just two tracks, but there's actually three tracks there. So that, it occurred to me that we have an opportunity here. If Shoreline East runs on, on the Amtrak, and we have a system coming down from the north, and we could go either to Groton, or we could go either that to New London and then west from there. So that shows you sort of what the situation is. Down at the bottom here is Electric Boat. Up above here off the screen is, is the U.S. Navy Base. So now, if I've taken, take one of the, the maps from the, one of the recent publications, you sort of get a sense of the, how, how we transport things now. And if you'll notice, and it's by no accident, that how we transport things is basically shown in the red, the I-95, the 395, and then the major routes throughout that part of the state. And if you look really close, you'll see that there is a fairer service shown on here that goes this way and goes that way. And if you really look close, you actually can see where the train tracks are. Although it's hard, but it's not, not unusual to have that sort of a photo, diagram in, in the regional publications, because basically, it is roads that are the king here. So now, the proposal to expand Shoreline East would be to basically extend passenger service between Old Saybrook and Rhode Island. And that would mean building several new stations or platforms. One in Nyannick, which is already under consideration by the state of Connecticut. The second one I'm proposing is a Groton Center platform, which would be located basically at the intersection of Route 1 and Paquannic Road on the south side of the train track. And there's, in that location on the western side of it, there would appear to be some space in there where you actually could, could put a station in there, where the three tracks come together. We, I propose that we would use new passenger coaches with a series of modern features, which includes things like 5G connections and so forth, and that we not, not want to have what is currently used on the Shoreline East, which are kind of ratty cars, frankly. I went to New York a weekend ago, and by God, I couldn't see out the window, it was so dirty. And it's just not the way to have a modern system. This system really should be first-class. The rest of the world has first-class train services, no reason why we can't. So we would then connect the Shoreline East with a new branch going up north toward Norwich. We, for the purposes of this discussion, I've simply called it the Norwich Branch Line. And the reason I've called it the Norwich Branch Line is because when I look at the rest of the branch lines in Connecticut, they tend to be located where, or tend to be named by where they end up going. For example, the Nicanan Line starts in Stanford and goes up to Nicanan. Bridge, the one that goes up, up the, New Haven goes on up through to Hartford, and they all have their names, but they're, they're basically named as a result of where they're going. And so the Shoreline East might be properly called, or maybe called, the Norwich Branch Line. And we would want to change the service or the, that's available to the public. Instead of running on this crazy system that we have right now, which is not very commuter-friendly, we would ask that the service be run from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. from Monday through Friday, and then also on weekends. But basically, to try to create a commuter system so that people could actually get from where one end of the, one end of the train line to the other. And this would, linking up the Shoreline East with the Branch Line would, in one case, really very much solve the so-called last mile issue. Now, the last mile issue, so you know what this is, is that people often complain they have great train service, but it's train service to nowheres. Then they got to get in a car, they got to get in a taxi, they got to walk, they got to get a, some sort of bus system to get to where they're working. Now, I would go back and show you that, and I'm going to show it now, this on the, the map over here. I've blown up a section of Groton right here, and this is the track that comes here. This is where we would have the Groton Station, as it's Groton Center Station. But the track that runs around by Birch Plain Creek, comes around by the golf course, crosses the road right here with electric, with the Pizers on the east side of the road. And on the west side of the road is, is the facility of Electric Boat. And so if we were able to get commuters over to here, then literally we've solved the last mile problem. And that's a huge problem for most commuter systems. They don't solve that. And by, certainly by just sheer luck, we have had this, this configuration that already exists in, in our community. So, so now I show you the same map up here, I've just expanded it out. There would probably be, and let me just suddenly point out that we have an existing stop here in New London. We have an existing stop, a train, train station, a stop in Mystic, and there's one off the map over here in Westerly, Rhode Island. And so this is the train stop down here, and this one right here is not an Old Saybrook. And if we get one in Nyannick, right in this area here, then we would have, potentially, people could drive down, get in the train here, or get on a train here, go to New London. And if they go to New London, they could go to Electric Boat on this side of the river, the west side of the river. Or they could take the train across, hook around here, and end up with either Pizers or Electric Boat. Makes a lot of sense. If you're coming in from Rhode Island, you could do the same thing. People could get on at, at Westerly, people could get on in Mystic, and then make a stop change here in a hub, if you will, in the Groton Center Station, and go around here to a boat. Go around to the boat. Or alternatively, if you happen not to be working at the boat, and you happen to be working at the Navy Base, you then could go up to the Navy Base on the south, south end. Now, the proposal, and you'll see it in the, in the written part of what I've given you, is I've talked about ultimately running a system that runs all the way up to the Massachusetts border. I'm not proposing that right now because of practicality. What I know is the subbase is very sensitive to, to, to security issues, but they have indicated, at least informally at this point, that they'd be willing to put the parking lot on the south side of the South Gate, make that available for a train stop there, and they would, it would be a place where you could feed cars in to make this trip here, or make the trip across the river over, over to here. So it's one of those things that seems to, just, just by its very nature, seems to be, we seem to be lucky to have that. So this is the train station in, 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 in New London. There's the big old beautiful building. This is the one in Mystic that exists right now. It's not a train station, it's simply a restaurant. But nevertheless, trains do stop there, Amtrak one or two away a day. This is the train station over in Westerly, Rhode Island. Again, this is not operation, operating as a train station, but now it's a gallery. You go up to Kingston, West Kingston, you, you get into the, where the train station here is in Rhode Island, and then the end of the line is up at Wickford Junction. Now, I show you this Wickford Junction picture here, because you notice that when you look at this photograph here, there's these two trail, trail, or tracks over here. Those are Amtrak. This is the track that comes down alongside this junction, and that's the train system that runs from Massachusetts, from Boston, all the way down. that runs from Massachusetts, from Boston, all the way down to Wickford Junction. So ultimately, the proposal would be to connect up this set of tracks here, or the train service, so it goes down all the way to Westerly. And if we're able to do that, then people could get on in places like Providence on the train, come down all the way to Groton. And that makes, or go even further west. So it makes a whole lot of sense to do that. So, the second part, which I've sort of really already gone over with you, is establishing this new Norwich Branch Line. It would begin passenger service from basically the south end of the subbase to Electric Boat. It would have a platform at the, basically the Nautilus Museum. Then you have a center Groton Station, and that would probably be a little bit more complicated because of the nature of Amtrak's service through there. It probably means actually building a structure over the rails, although one has been pointed out that you could actually walk under the underpass to get from one side of the tracks to the other side of the tracks. And then you stop with a platform at the Pfizer EB Junction on Route 349. Here, you could use either light rail, or the current equipment that the State of Connecticut's using, which they call the M8. Took me a while to figure out what M8 was. I thought it was a spy service. It's actually not, it's the Mitsubishi train system that the State of Connecticut uses. And so, this connection would then really connect up with Groton Center Stations being the key here. Again, same time, solves the last mile problem, and importantly for us, here in Groton, it opens up the whole notion of transit-oriented development. Now, this system also opens up transit-oriented development for Stonington, and also opens it up for New London. And I have already spent some time informally talking with the mayors of our jurisdictions, the city, New London, and the selectmen of Stonington, and they're all kind of interested in this whole, this concept. And so, nothing more than another picture of this. It's probably actually easier to see it on the poster than it is on the slide. And then, what this would basically do is improve Shoreline East service from Old Saybrook to Rhode Island, establish a branch line, it uses existing track, it would have some new stops, and it links towns and cities in southeastern Connecticut by passenger rail. So what do we get from this? Well, we get increased use of railroads to the center of the industrial base of our region. Oops, sorry, flipped that a little too quick. It would create the possibility for a real train-based inter-Connecticut commuting system. It would provide opportunity for a New York to Providence and then on to Boston system, which is, really would be a real true regional system, and if it was timed right, would be a computer, a commuter-related system. And if we can be careful and figure out how to do it, we could run the, basically the Norwich Branch Line from Groton all the way up to Worcester, Massachusetts, which will allow us to connect up to Massachusetts on the eastern end of our state. One of the reasons I think this is very important is this is an alternative for getting vehicles off, cars and trucks off the road. It potentially reduces traffic congestion, I-95 and 395, and would be good for growth. I mean, all you have to do is look at the Gold Star Bridge, and you realize it's 10 lanes of traffic going across that, and coming in on both sides, there's only two lanes of traffic. And, you know, that's just the recipe for a real, a real long-term problem. And it improves safety and reduces the number of delays associated with traffic. It has a number of environmental benefits, create a better quality of life for us. If we do this correctly with proper cars, we can get good commuting service, the ability to do more work on the train. It will improve our economic industrial base in southeastern Connecticut. It supports the announced 5,000 to 18,000 jobs, that's been announced by Electric Boat. I find those numbers a little bit squishy. I can't seem to get anybody to tell me exactly what they're really talking about, but that's what's been published in the paper on a number of occasions. It supports clearly the mixed-use development zone along Route 1. It creates the transit-oriented development opportunity and funding sources for the town of Groton. So here's how we begin this process. I have talked to the State Department of Transportation, the public transportation group, and I finally, after they listened, and they all nodded, and went like this, and said, "Nice job." And then the question was, my question to them was, "So how do I get this thing started?" And they leaned over and said, "You need a letter from your town." And so, this is what this is all about. We need to get letters of support from Groton, from the city, from Stonington, and from New London, to really get this thing, get their attention, so they'll start looking at this thing. Then we'll have to, I'll have to work on getting support from our regional, state, federal partners, elected partners. We'll also need to get support from the base, from Electric Boat, Pfizer's, and so forth. And then, it's going to be really a heavy lift to really get public support and full public engagement here. Now, I say that because, right now, people drive in this whole region. In fact, 80% of the people who go to Electric Boat drive in single occupancy vehicles. That's 26,000 people come to our town, some to boats, some to other places. But it's a huge number of people that are in vehicles. And if we can take some of the pressure off the roads and put them on, and get them on trains, we then really improve the quality of our life here. So, the idea is that if we build a modern, reliable, efficient, cost-effective public transportation system, the public will come, and the quality of life will become better. And so, I should say that we're not replacing automobiles. Clearly automobiles and trucks are going to be with us for a very long time, but this begins to really provide an alternative. Some of the information that I provide you in the written material goes into this in a lot more detail, but this is the concept that I'm proposing that we undertake and would ask for your support. And I'd be happy to answer, without answering any questions you might have at this point in time.
Well, thank you very much for all the work you've done. I'm sure there are questions and comments. Who wants to start? Councilor Franco.
So looking at the map that you have here with the train stations marked on it, so the subbase has one, and they're saying that they would be interested in having one at the parking lot, is that where the subbase museum is?
Yes, yes. When I talked, my first talk with the folks at the base was, the question was that maybe they would be willing to have parking on where the parking is for the museum.
Museum, okay.
And there, I was actually quite surprised and taken back by that, but I said, "Right on, this is good." So, I think we have a possibility there.
And then going north, how many stops would you think there would be from like possibly the subbase going to Norwich?
How, what, say that again, please.
Between the subbase and Norwich?
Yes.
That train? Like, how many stops do you think there would be? Because this would be a commuter train, basically, you would say.
Well, we would start out by having it start at the south end of the subbase.
Right.
I would like to see it go through the subbase all the way to Norwich and beyond that. And the reason is because if you look at the development pattern in our region, it is around New London, Groton, and Norwich, and then going further north. And so, if we could get, and it will take some time to get that squared away so we can get the security clearances that are necessary to get through that. But part of this is, I really would like to see this thing begin sooner than later, and so you take what you can get and do what you can with what you got right now.
So it would be Norwich, then down to the subbase, like a direct?
Yes.
Okay, and then it would loop around. So, if we had mixed-use development, let's just say in parts, like near the highway, right there where it connects down, would there be possibilities to put in other stops?
The answer is probably yes. I mean, I think you would, you, I mean, right now, your zoning, it's this area right in here that's zoned for mixed-use, right here? And so that would probably be the first place you would actually want to do that. And basically, what they talk about is you want to have it so it's walkable, and they talk about 10 minutes' walk as being typically the distance you get away from the station.
Right, I was just curious, because I was thinking maybe down by Thames Street, and I believe it's Bridge Street, Bridge and Thames, in that area?
Just, well, when I talked to the mayor of the city and explained this whole concept to him, he was kind of excited about what the possibilities might be over here in the city. And so I think we're going to have a good relationship there with them on mixed-use development.
Right, because I'm just thinking of it as a local commuter train, not so much as like the commuter train from New York down to Old Saybrook. I mean, that stops at all the towns, I get it, but this is more local for workers in this general area, is that correct?
My feeling is that, given what's happened with particularly the addition of the new submarines and the workforce that's going to be generated here, and mind you, the workforce that's being generated is only, I don't want to talk about what happens to that electric boat, but for every new submarine, you have 500 new officers enlisted coming for each submarine, and their families. So all of a sudden, and no one's really talked about that, what's going to happen up in this end of the community? And there's nothing about this train system as being just for workers. It can be for the public, that's what it's for, the public.
Right, but in my mentality, just thinking the one from Norwich down to, into the city, I'm thinking of it as more like of a local, and how people can get transportation, like just say you work in Groton, and you live in Groton and you work in Norwich, it's both ways. I mean, there's.
Exactly.
I mean, because as we're saying that the workers in Groton, 80% commute in, and that's not just Pfizer and EB, that's all types of.
That's everybody.
That's everybody, including all jobs that are in our town. So that's what I'm thinking, like, would there be more opportunities for more stops along the Norwich line coming down? That's what I was curious, if it's able to get through.
Okay, you're pushing me outside my expertise. I mean, I think the answer is yes, but I don't know how you go about figuring that out and calculating. That's why we need to take this to the Department of Transportation for them to help figure this out, because there's obviously some relationships between population density and how these things work.
Right, all right. I think you're, great presentation, thank you very much.
Councilors Bordeland and Baumgartner.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done with this. It's quite expansive and is something that is long overdue and needed, looking at it from a commuter train to a, you know, a travel train of people wanting to come in and looking at economic growth and development in our area, and tourism, and the accessibility aspect. I think that is huge. Thinking also of the casinos, thinking of that more commuter train kind of going up through Norwich, looking at down the road, like stops in Ledger also, so that people, a lot of people that commute to the casinos to work, Foxwoods and Mohegan, come not just from Groton, New London, surrounding areas, and so having them come from Nyannick and be able to jump on that train and switch over, and then take the one north would be a huge asset, and vice versa, going both ways. So I think like as this unfolds, and I understand that that one's going to take longer because of the path through the Navy Base, I think the interests will just grow. And as we grow our town and looking at having more apartment, different economic growth happening in our town where different investors are coming in and building, youth want places where they don't have to drive as much, they can hop on something and go. And so even with the start before that's able to go through to the Navy Base, just even having it locally here, one would think, coming from like thinking of the Worcester train where I went to school, living in Worcester, there was, from the apartment I lived in, there was a shuttle to the train station, you know? So there's such a huge accessibility factor just by having it start somewhere. And so, I'm excited for this, I think this is what Groton needs, and from an environmental and a quality of life standpoint, looking at, you know, our highway system here in Connecticut wasn't meant for, you know, families to have two and three vehicles, and they're outdated and they have not been updated. So, two-lane highways out front, we have a ton of accidents, and so this would be something that could solve a lot of those problems. So I think this is wonderful, and I'm excited to see where it goes. Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mr. Stever, for coming out and providing this pretty extensive presentation. When I served in the legislature, I served on the Transportation Committee and took a keen interest in many of the proposals, you know, you've brought forth that a lot of folks in the town for years have been talking about. You know, and there's a pretty active group in Mystic that has been calling for Shoreline East expansion to the train station over on the Stonington side of the river. And, you know, I think, given the issues we're having with congestion on our highways, it's important that we look to create a more, you know, intermodal transportation network in our community and the region. In your research, you know, one thing I've been always intrigued by is the ownership of the actual rail lines. So as you mentioned, I think Providence and Worcester and the Genesee and Wyoming, they own those freight lines. And so, while the line going through your proposed Groton Center Station, the ownership is maintained by, or the line is maintained by, I believe, Amtrak. And so, in your proposal, how would you kind of engage those freight line owners so that this could have some legs?
Well, this is, again, this is what the details would have to be worked out with the Department of Transportation. Basically, Department of Transportation now is leasing service from Amtrak to go east-west. And so that's an ongoing relationship. And so, extending that east is going to require some negotiations with Amtrak. And while the track's in place, it's not just a matter of signing up. There are some other issues like bridge crossings, which becomes significant issues, and we have it at the Connecticut River, we have it at Nyannick, we have it at Thames, and we have it at Mystic. And so, those all would have to be worked out here very carefully. And that's not an easy negotiation at all. And then, the train, as you well point out, the one that runs down the east side here is the old Providence and Worcester, now the Genesee and Wyoming system, but commonly known as the Providence Worcester here. And that is a freight line, although, and it runs daily traffic on that, particularly at night, and it's heavy traffic, and it runs both ways, and they're running things like garbage and cement and all kinds of heavy-duty stuff, but there's no reason why that could not be run during the day for a commuter service. And I should point out that in 1900, this community was connected up with rails, as you'll see in the written part of my presentation to you, is that where I live in Noank, 500 people came to Noank to work in the shipyard by trolley and train every day. So, we know how to do it, we have done it, and in fact, the people who say, "Well, you can't overload the system," this system is far from being overloaded. It's been updated, sure, and they try to run the trains faster, but part of why it's so interesting is that, and maybe it's the good and the bad, but look at the way this thing snakes through the community here. You can't run that train that fast on that kind of a snaky track, but you could run certainly a 50 or 60 mile an hour commuter system on that, on that kind of track with no problem. When you start to get up in really high speeds, you can't do it. And so that's part of why there's been this discussion of running a system straight up to Providence to bypass all this. Well, you got to use, I think you have to use what you got, and what we got here is really a system. is really a system that's been electrified, we've got all the, the system in place, the signaling and so forth, it's ready to go, as they say, shovel-ready.
Councilor Keed.
Let's see. I think it's hard sometimes for people to envision something that doesn't currently exist, but I think that's the point of what we're doing tonight, right? We're passing along a letter to say, please look into this.
Well, that's, that's one of the things we were going to talk about tonight, is if there's consensus to ask that a letter be written, because as I understand it, that's what Mr. Stever heard from the people he talked to, correct?
My ask to you is to write that letter to the governor and to the Commissioner of Transportation requesting they undertake an evaluation to figure out how to make this thing work.
Okay, so I think that's easy.
That's what I'm looking for.
I'm the second, the question that I have is from the circle on the bottom there over to EB, is that a new track or is that an existing?
No, this track already exists, and it goes actually right into the EB facility right now. Now, I'm not, frankly, I had not figured out whether the new construction is going to change that, but it does, it does, if you go stand on 349 and look right down there, it runs right down into the heart of the South Yard.
Is that like, I know on the one that runs east to west further up, there are three tracks and the trains use two of them, so one of the tracks looks like it's a little rusty, so it must not be used very often.
Where are we talking about?
The lower track, does that also have three tracks?
That doesn't get used as much as the upper part right now, but it is in good shape, as far as I can tell. I mean, they do run heavy freight in there, they bring in a lot of material into electric boat.
Councilor Parker, I have a question for you that you might know the answer, because you're probably familiar. The circle there, is that the Ice Cube Building?
That's what I was just thinking in my head.
I think that's where that is. They call it the Ice Cube Building. It used to be Pfizer, now it's privately, it's owned by someone else.
Yes.
And there are the tracks right there. So the Ice Cube Building sits on like the south side of it, and then the track crosses and goes into Pfizer and there, and then pests would be there.
Right through Pfizer.
So it could, there's, I think that's what you're proposing, is that would be a stop there?
Yeah.
Rather than interfering with the security at EB, stopping it at that point.
Well, I guess the question is, it would, it would make sense for the Department of Transportation to really talk to all the parties here and with the town, figure out in the city, to figure out what would make the most sense to do that. You get that level of detail.
Councilor Parker. Before we do that, can we just confirm that the city is already going to think about doing this at the same time, so we're all doing it together at the same time? Because it would not make any sense to do something without the city being involved.
Okay, well, I've talked to Mayor Hendricks two or three weeks ago, and he was quite interested in this thing, and I, we left it that I would make this presentation to you first and get your reaction, and then as soon as I had some sense of what you're all feeling you'd like to do, then I have made a commitment to go brief the city mayor and the council. Same thing for New London, and Mayor Passerino is also very excited, and I've already talked to First Legman in Stonington, the same thing.
If that's the case, I think we all should be, all the towns that it's going to affect should be together submitting a letter then. That's my only, I don't want to do it one at a time, because technically that's in the city of Groton, even though it's within the town, still a subdivision. So you have one letter going out, and then we're going to have another follow-up letter going out at the same time, why can't we do the letters together? But, Mr. Burt?
I was going to say, I think, you know, rather than consensus or resolutions, better just to show on record that you're in favor of looking at it, but that buys me some time to check with other, you know, we could word it such that it authorizes me to do it in conjunction. You know, I'll know more by the time the resolution gets submitted, I'll check with the other towns and then write the appropriate resolution if you're interested.
Councilor Melendez.
Will the town actually be responsible for funding the building of the stations?
No, traditionally, that's been funded by the state.
Okay.
And I'm hoping to get some federal involvement here as well, but the state's typically involved with it. Now, there obviously will be some costs with the classic road cut and, you know, sewer and water, all of that stuff, but that's basically the, and these aren't cheap, these stations. I mean, they have elevators, they have to be handicapped accessible, and they have to meet all the standards for Amtrak and so forth, so it's a pretty involved process. Part of what I would like to see, I just recently was in, on the New Canaan Line in, down the other end of the state, and New Canaan is probably the first or second fanciest town in the state, and they just have a concrete platform. There's no roof, it's a, and it's, and so it is possible to run a train commuter service with not a real fancy system, and you could have that possibly at, down here at the south end, but potentially up there at the north end, and maybe the one in between would have to be a bit fancier, because you're dealing with Amtrak.
Councilors Apar. Yes, please.
As far as power equipment is concerned, how does that compare with the, with the traffic on 95?
I can't tell you the exact numbers for that. What I can tell you is that in the state of Connecticut, 38% of our greenhouse gases, okay, that's energy, it's used, comes from trucks and automobiles. So the question is, if you start using mass transit, and if you start using mass transit with electrical system, you bring that carbon, I think you bring that carbon footprint way down.
I'm not sure of that.
Well, no, I'm pretty sure of that. I don't have the numbers, I've tried to find those numbers, and I've been unable to, unable to do that, but it just makes sense, the mass transit, if you can run this all on, and the commitment of the state is to get us on renewable energy, and that's for trains as well as everything else, households and industry and businesses, that makes sense. And so I think you do dramatically reduce the carbon footprint. And frankly, if, if I had to guess, we're going to have a real problem with automobiles, with the climate situation we're faced with right now, and it's going to be really important to get people into alternative modes of transportation. I mean, you see this, people say, "Oh yeah, we're, we're always going to walk and ride our bikes to work." Oh, no, they're not. That's not going to happen, and people aren't going to give up their cars anytime soon. But you want to be able to provide a really modern transportation system for public to get to and from work and go shopping and do what they have to do.
I think that, you know, as our population has increased generally in the country, 95 corridor has become increasingly congested, and I don't think it's far from being glutted to a stop. I have been glutted to a stop on 95 and on 395 on a number of occasions where traffic has just backed up. And we need alternative methods of transportation. There was some talk a while ago about building a monorail that went around Stonington, North Stonington, Groton, Norwich, and made a loop. That, that never came to be, but it would, if these things get efficient, now, I wouldn't take a bus because you have to wait so darn long for them, or you have to plan your trip, so there's no spontaneity to taking public transportation. But at the same time, I think we're getting to the point where if you want to get there, you're going to have to have access to some of these alternate means of transportation.
Just to give you a personal experience here, we have grown kids who've lived down in the city, and driving to the city can be as quick as two and a half hours, or it can be five and a half hours.
Sure.
Just because if you hit that traffic between basically Stanford and Norwich, you come to a halt. So, I mean, you're absolutely right about that.
Mr. Burt wanted to add something.
At the risk of admitting I glanced at my phone, Mayor Hendrick texted me, he's been watching, he just said, after the presentation to the city, he'll be, he intended to write a letter of support.
Very nice. So at this point, I wanted to just chime in, thank you very much for all the work you've done on this. I know it's been extensive, you've put together a nice proposal, and I would be in favor of the council in conjunction with the other municipalities drafting a letter to the appropriate entities to advocate for this plan. I think it's a good start, having these three stops. I think it's doable, it's not encroaching on secure areas, and it would be a nice way to start the process with the goal of eventually extending further, but I think this is a good step, and I would fully support writing a letter. I concur. Is there any objection to requesting Mr. Burt write a letter to the appropriate entities? I see none. Mr. Burt, do you need a resolution from us, or is just the consensus from the council sufficient? Very good. And then we will hear back. You are going to talk to Mayor Hendrick, you said, and go to the city council?
Yes.
Okay, so then perhaps after that-
I'll talk with the three other heads of-
Mayor Passero and First Legman Chesbrough, Chesbrough?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right.
I hope eventually you get to the mayor, I think it is of Westwood, because they potentially have a very important role here as well.
Very nice.
This, to be successful, frankly, in the long run, is going to have to have some real cooperation between the state of Connecticut and the state of Rhode Island, and that's going to be, when I asked about, "How often do you guys meet?", it was, like, "Well, we have lunch every couple of years," and that's not going to be the kind of system that's going to get done. We have to really get on it and work it. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Councilor Bordeland had another comment.
I just wanted to ask, I know there's a old turn stop in, in center Groton at the Quonic Bridge, back where the coal used to be, and they used to spin the thing, and the workers used to come in. Anything back there as far as the line?
As far as I know, that's an Amtrak maintenance facility.
Okay.
And I don't know how that might play.
Yeah.
It, it might become part of the system in terms of how you maintain the rolling stock, and I just don't know the answer there.
Because I think it was a stop at one point of sorts, where they would get off, the workers would get off there at that turn stop and things. My other question was, is there any thoughts of getting something in the newspaper to get the thoughts out and get it in, publicized and kind of get people thinking about it and starting now, even before the other towns write a letter, I think?
If you're going to write this letter and you directed the town manager to do it, I will see that this, this whole package gets taken to the, the day and probably to the Mirror.
I think it'd be great to get that in the public's eye and start getting them to talk about it and getting it out on social media and just getting people's feedback and getting it kind of in the forefront.
And I would be happy to come back and chat further if you, at some point, want to know more about, and will I find out.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to report back.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to 5B, 2020-120 Sealy School property. This is one of several items we need to take care of tonight. This one is scheduling a public hearing for the sale of the municipal property. Page 17, I believe, around Councilor Parker, correct?
Motion to recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing on April 7, 2020 for the sale of the former Williams University School, is so moved.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Keed, and we have Mr. Reiner with us this evening, and I'm not sure, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Reiner.
Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So tonight, this agenda item, we're focusing on the fact that Connecticut general laws requires any municipality to hold a public hearing regarding the sale of municipal property prior to the approval of such sale. So this is really to schedule the public hearing, as well as refer this item to the RTM for the sale of the property irrespective of what the end development type or scenario of the property would be. In addition, the town does by state law need to appraise the property, which we had done one appraisal under the previous zoning. We're having the property reappraised now that we have a more accurate number on what the demolition of the cost, demolition cost of the property would be and under some new zoning. So really, in order to move forward, this is kind of step one, the public hearing and the referral of the matter to the RTM, and once, after the public hearing, that's what we would be talking about moving forward with an option agreement.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Reiner at this particular, on this particular item, knowing that we have two other things to do tonight on the same thing? Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2020-120 Sealy School property, schedule public hearing for the sale of municipal property, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councillors?
Thank you.
We are on to item 5C, and you all have revision in front of you, 2020-166 approving amount of bonds to be issued in FYE 2020, and it is a single paper, it says revised COW at the top, and there's a highlighted dollar amount on the bottom. Does everyone see it?
Yeah.
So we are on to Counselor Franco, please, it's on the back of the revised sheet, please.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve amount of bonds to be issued in FYE 2020, is so moved.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Good evening, would you just introduce yourself, please?
Cindy Landry, Finance Director, and with me tonight I have Bill Lindsay, who's from Hilltop Securities, he's our financial advisor.
Thank you for coming up.
You have a revised referral from me today that primarily increases the amount of notes that we're going to be issuing for the school project. We received a cash flow from Arcadis very, very recently that we saw that the, particularly for the middle school, that the expenditures related to that, as it's supposed to be done by June, are significantly increasing over the last cash flow that we had. So we're fortunate that we're able to come here tonight and had not already had this meeting, and were able to make an adjustment to the COW for the increase in the notes only. So hopefully you've had a chance to go through this, I can just give you a brief, you know, this, the school plan, we are here tonight for both the school plan and the sewer project. But the school plan was approved at a referendum in 2016, originally for the 184.5, there was a second December 18 referendum that changed from the middle schools from renovating as new to building as new. This is our second bond issue for the project, we did issue 20 million in bonds last year and 15 million in notes, so this year we're looking for 20 million in bonds and $56 million in notes. And then for the sewer treatment plant, that was approved at a November 15 referendum, and that was a seven, excuse me, an $8.2 million bond issue, and that was for the effluent pump station and rehab of the Fishtown Road pump station. Fishtown Road is complete, and the effluent pump station is, should be complete by May. So that'll be, we hope that, we think that this will be the only bond issue for that project. So I provided you some backup as we always do when we come to the council to ask for approving the amount of the bonds. There are several sections, there's one that just, section A gives you the recap of how much was authorized, the 184, previous of 20, we're asking for 20 more. Section B just gives you the impact of this new issue on the mill rate, and all of this, when we went to referendum at 16, the, this was all put forth way back in 16, we like to remind people of that. And section C gives you, we always have to compare ourselves to the state debt limit and the council's own debt policy limit, that's what section C is.
Excuse me for one second, if you wouldn't mind just explaining that the public doesn't have this in front of them?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you just go through where, to give the people a general idea of where we stand compared to the statutory limit, where we stand-
Okay, sure.
-to policy, because sometimes people get concerned that we are inching closer to where we shouldn't be, and it looks okay so far.
Yes, it is right now.
Right.
It's fine. So our statutory debt limit, we have prepared this, that includes all the debt for the town, and includes the general fund debt, and also the sewer operating, and the school debt. So right now, the total outstanding with all of our existing debt and our proposed and any pending debt, because we do have future debt we're going to be issuing for the schools, is 130 million. Now, per the state statutes, they will allow us to bond up to 720 million, and so we are at an 18% of that, at 130 million. And then the state, the town, excuse me, the town has a policy of no more than 50% of the state limit, which would give us at 360 million, we would be allowed to bond. So, but now we're at a 36% of that. So we also- So we also, there's a section where it talks about, it compares it to the 2020 adopted general fund expenditures, which is, everyone knows, the adopted budget was 129 million. The debt service is going to be 12 million and the estimated for 2021 is going to be an additional 9 million, which puts us to 7.3. And it is supposed to be no more than 10%. So we're at a good... And the section at the bottom just gives the amount of the outstanding debt. The outstanding current debt is 59 million and with the proposed, it would bring us to a total of 71 million.
Thank you for explaining that.
Sure. And the second page just gives you for, not the second page, but the next section, it gives all of the existing general fund debt through the life of the loans, which goes from 2020 to 2040, which is 65 million. The proposed bonding of the 20 million would add an additional 26 million over the life of the loans. So the existing, the proposed, would bring it up to a total of 91 million over the life of the loan, excuse me, of the bonds. And then the final one is just a color graph that shows the existing debt service and the proposed school bond. And you can see how it goes up and then gradually as other debt is paid down, it drops off. So I'll continue on with the sewer side of it.
Yes, please.
And this is a much smaller issue. It was an 8.2 referendum and as I said, we think that this project is ultimately going to be complete by May. So we'll be issuing, it is coming in a little bit under budget, which is a good thing, seven, a little over $7 million will be issuing for this debt. And so section B just gives the impact on the mill rate. And then section C again is, it's really the same as the debt schedule that we had for the general fund, because we look at this and we have townwide debt. So it would be the same numbers as on that, that I just explained for the town debt. So for the sewer debt, the sewer district debt currently has outstanding $7 million in debt. This would add an additional 9 million, so the combined total would be 16 million over the course of the new debt. And again, this is a, just shows again the chart of the red and the blue for the existing and proposed sewer debt. So that covers the new bonds that we're asking for authorization to, for the council to approve. And in my referral, again, it says 20 million in bonds and we also be issuing 56 million in notes and 7,45,000 in bonds. And what the council is actually, will be approving that at a council meeting.
Thank you. Are there questions for Director Landry? Council Baumgartner and Franco.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Just a quick question with respect to reimbursable funds. So case in point, the pump station, the Fishtown pump station and the effluent station. Are any of those funds reimbursable from, say, like the Clean Water Fund from the state?
No, we do have a Clean Water, that Clean Water Fund loan that we took out several years ago and that's the only debt that's outstanding for the sewer district, but there are no Clean Water Funds available at this time. We did look into that before we went, when we went to referendum for this. So this will be totally funded by bonds.
Thank you.
Sure.
Council Franco?
So the estimated debt service for '21 is the, I'll just call it 9.4 million. And then with future, what do you think we're going to be at with the future? Where is that gonna place us?
You mean on a percentage basis? I mean, we will have other debt that's coming off.
Have you done an analysis of that?
Well, this, section C does include the outstanding, the pending. If you notice, we have the 53 and then we have the sewer. And if you go down, we have included the pending bonding debt, the 20, and then the 44 million that we expect still to be bonded for this.
Mm-hmm.
So this does include all of the debt.
So that's the total debt. And what would that be for the debt service though?
Oh.
I'm just looking at if we're getting close to the 10%.
Is that the page 23 chart?
I'm looking at 22, right in here.
No, I'm wondering if this is your answer though? I'm not sure. I'm ill at Cindy, or Finance Director.
No, yeah. No, we don't have it projecting forward out. We don't have that debt service. We only do, have only presented the debt service for the 20 million that we're asking for, for tonight.
Oh, okay, that's right. That's what I was just saying. Which is why she does this.
So you have, do you have that analysis by any chance or have you run those numbers on your own?
I think we have those, we just don't have it with us.
Correct.
We do.
Can you possibly send those out, just so I can see where we are?
Sure.
Looking in the future as to where we might be with some other things that might be coming down the road.
And I know this is something that when the original school project came up, because of the big ticket, we did take a look at that and know that it might be close, but I think that we had thought that it would not exceed.
Yeah, affirmatively, it was not projected to exceed your local policy, so.
Right. So I just was thinking, if we get close to 10, there's also some other issues that are coming up and are, that we may have discussions about that we should take this into consideration.
You mean additional referendums for additional debt?
It's possible.
Okay.
Okay, there are no other comments or questions, so we will vote on 2020-166 approving the amount of bonds to be issued in FYE 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Okay. Now, we are on to 2020-168 refunding of general obligation bonds, lots A and B. And this is page 30 in your packet and I believe we are on, Council Keed.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to adopt the resolution authorizing the refunding of the bonds and the furthest matter to the RTM 6.5.3. I so moved.
Second. Moved by Keed and seconded by Franco.
I'm gonna give a very brief and then I'm gonna turn it over to Bill, who's gonna give you a much more detailed and thorough explanation of refunding bonds. But periodically, our financial advisor will look at what's going on in the market and look at the rates and look at what we have outstanding in bonds to see if there is an opportunity that we could refund or refinance a set of bonds so that we could lower our debt service. So he had reached out to me a while back to say that he thought we had an opportunity. And then when the rates were reduced, it, we had a greater opportunity. So that's what we're looking to do. There's three lots that we're looking to refund along with issuing the new debt.
So I'm gonna turn it over to him. He has, do you wanna go through your...
Yes, I prepared a presentation, I think, that Cindy had passed out to you that I'd like to just go through if you would indulge me. What we've got here is, we're gonna, at first I wanted to just start out and kinda give you a brief overview of the market, give you an idea of why we have the opportunity that's before you this evening. And then we'll talk a little bit more in depth about the actual, the actual bonds that we're looking to refinance here. So as Cindy said, you know, when, what we're looking to do, the best analogy here is looking to refinance the debt as rates have come down at lower costs. So the, what we've all probably are most familiar with or may even be doing currently is looking to refinance, say, our home mortgage. Rates have come down, go to the bank and say, okay, I'd like to refinance at a low rate, decrease my monthly payment. And that's in essence what we're looking to do here. There's one distinction that I'll talk about in a moment, whereas when we sell municipal bonds, they're not prepayable at any point in time. They're only prepayable after a certain point in time that we refer to as a call date. So first, it's an optional redemption date. That redemption date is the option of, only of the town as the borrower. And, you know, traditionally, when we say we're selling a 20-year, a 20-year series of bonds, you know, that call date may occur halfway through the issuance. So say a year 10 and so we can refinance the maturities of 11 through 20, let's say, as we get close to or approach that optional redemption date. We were fortunate because of the town's strong credit rating, we were able to shorten that optional redemption date a little bit. And we sold these bonds, specific bonds that we're referring to here with either a five-year or an eight-year call date, so a little bit better than what we traditionally see in the market. Again, you know, the town's got a very strong credit rating and we were able to leverage that. But I'll talk a little bit about that more in depthly. But what I wanna do on the first two slides is just kinda give you just an idea of where the market is and why we have this opportunity. So what you have on slide number one is the, is the change in the 20-year tax-exempt AAA rated municipal spot yield over the last 20 months. And I won't go through each point that's on here, but I wanted to just kinda paint the picture for you as we've moved through 2019, why rates have fallen to where they have. And really, there's only been, we're talking about the municipal space, there's been two major drivers of that. One is concerns about slowdown of the global economy. And you'll note on here where we've highlighted areas where China reporting weaker trade and then followed by the European Union reporting weaker trade. And then ultimately, with the administration and China getting into a back and forth over tariffs, really drove these concerns over slowing of the global economy. And as those concerns have played out over, through 2019, municipal bond yields specifically have come down. The other situation that's been the primary driver of municipal bond yields over the last, say, 12 to 13 months, has to do with a bit of a supply and demand imbalance. And that's really demonstrated by, if you think back to 2000, January 2018, when the Jobs Act was enacted, that tax reform that included some corporate tax cuts. One of the offsets to that was a cap of the SALT deduction or state and local tax deduction on your federal income tax returns. And so as a result, people who live in high tax states like Connecticut, New York and New Jersey, lost the ability to write off the taxes that they pay in local property taxes, have sought to find ways to shield their income, which basically means buying tax-exempt bonds. And so as a result, we've seen 60, or had seen 60 straight weeks of positive fund flows into municipal bond funds, which is our proxy for demand, is, it was unprecedented, both in the duration of consecutive weeks of positive flows, as well as the dollar value of flows that were into those funds. And what that, what that really did was continue to drive demand. And as demand was driven and supply was not keeping up pace, you know, you think about, you know, your kind of Economy 101, as demand increase, as demand is increasing and supply is not matching, it tends to drive prices higher, right? Drives bond prices higher and then in turn drives yields lower. So those bond prices and bond yields work inversely to one another. So those two factors, the slowing of the global economy as well as the imbalance in supply and demand, really what has driven these, the yields down over the last, the last 18 months. More recently, with the, with concerns over coronavirus, has really stoked those fears and we've seen even more of a flight to quality, which has helped drive bond prices higher. So that, you know, what I wanted to do then is if you look on slide number two here, kinda give you a larger, a longer view of the markets and where yields are here. Specifically, if you look in the chart in the upper left-hand corner, what that shows is comparison of the full yield curve. Now, this is the maturities, one year out to 30 years. The green line represents yields in March of 2019. The blue line represents the yields as of this Friday, March of 20. You can see on the short end of the yield curve, rates are lower by about 100 basis points or a full percentage point. And at 30 years, they're 150 basis points lower now than they were a year ago. Looking at the chart at the bottom of the page, this is a longer time horizon. So this is the, these are, these are rates over the last 20 years. The blue bars represent each of those maturities, years 1 through 30, and the highs and lows over that 20-year period. And you can see first the green bars, which represent the highs and lows over the last two years, are at the bottom end of that range. And then specifically, the rates as of this past Friday, at the very bottom of that range. So we are at 20-year lows here, pretty much all the way across the yield curve, with the exception of maybe the first two years. So I hope that paints the picture as to why we have the opportunity that we have before you and now we'll talk about specifically what that, that opportunity represents. So what we're looking to do here is to refinance roughly 22 million of outstanding debt of the town, which is a little under half of the town's total debt. I wanted to go back to that analogy I had about the home mortgage and the ability to prepay at any point in time. As I said, when we issue these municipal bonds, we have that optional redemption date or call date. So if we're refinancing bonds within 90 days or beyond that optional call date, we refer to that as current refunding. If we're in advance of that optional call date, refer to that as advanced refunding. And, and so the reason I bring this up is thinking back to that Jobs Act in January of 2018, in addition to capping the SALT deduction, Congress also removed the ability of state and local governments to refinance debt through an advance refunding on a tax-exempt basis, all right? So it kinda took away one of the tools in the municipal toolbox. However, rates have fallen enough now that we can actually perform an advance refunding on a taxable basis. So we would be taking what would, bonds that were originally issued on a tax-exempt basis and refinancing them with taxable bonds in advance of that stated call date and generate some pretty healthy savings for the town. So I wanted to just point that out because I know in the past, the town has issued taxable bonds and there was a bit of a stigma around them. But, you know, that, that, the situation with rates where they are currently, that kind of has been a new change in the market and we're seeing roughly a third of the, of the volume in the last three months that have come as taxable issuances on behalf of state and local governments. So this is a, this is a situation that's relatively new to the market, but it's being done pretty much across the country at this point. Terms of the specific bonds we're looking to refinance, Cindy said, there are three prior series of bonds. We broke them up into four, into four tranches here, if you will. Some of these bonds that we're looking to refinance are refundings of a prior refunding, so we're actually refinancing the original issuance for a second time here, which again is a function of the, of us including a shorter optional redemption date when we issued them as the second time around. So specifically, we're looking at 2011A series of bonds, which are general fund-supported bonds, 2013A series of bonds, which are general fund-supported bonds, 2014 series of bonds, which are also general fund-supported bonds, and then 2011B series of bonds, which, which were supported by the Sewer Operating Fund. All right, the, of those, of those series, the 2013 series bonds would be the, the specific bonds that we would be looking to refinance on as, replace with taxable bonds, because that series of bonds isn't callable until October of '22. But the other three series would be done on a tax-exempt basis. So moving to page four, we can talk a little bit about what the, what the actual savings looks like here in this. As we move through the presentation, we, the taxable bonds versus the tax-exempt bonds, in my mind, that's just a mechanism to generate savings for the town. I, what we did is we broke out the savings really between funds. So the general fund bonds and what that saving looks like versus the sewer operating fund bonds and what those savings are, you know, with the understanding that those are two different revenue sources. But on page four is a summary of the, of the total issuance. So again, prior debt is roughly $22 million. We'd be looking to replace that with a little over 21 million, 21.4 rounding up. Because we have the advance refunding component of this, those bonds would be outstanding until October of '22, we would be establishing a escrow account and placing these proceeds into that escrow account. That escrow account is irrevocable and would be used to pay the debt service until that, those call dates that I, that I referred to earlier. Because the 2013 bonds aren't callable until October of '22, there'll be a number of interest payments that need to be made from that escrow account up until we hit that call date. So I put here for you what the escrow requirements are, the total principal and interest that would need to be paid to redeem those bonds, make the bondholders whole, is closer to $22.9 million, right? And that, when we talk about the refunding resolutions, it's a, there's a $22 million refunding resolution for the general fund-supported bonds and then a $2 million resolution for the sewer operating fund-supported bonds, for a total of 24 million. It's important to understand that the total funding requirement is just south of $23 million here, including what needs to be paid out of that escrow account for the, for the... million here, including what needs to be paid out of that escrow account for the periodic interest payments out through the October call date. In terms of what the borrowing cost, though, on the new bonds, it'd be something in the neighborhood of just, just under 1.5%. In terms of the total savings, which is your most interested in, the savings to the town, combined savings between the two funds, just over $1.5 million. What we did is we took, made a present value calculation of those annual cash flow savings using the bond yield. So in current dollars, that would be $1.4 million of savings. And the last, the last bullet on this page here, the percentage of net present value savings compared to what the, the amount of the prior outstanding bonds. The significance of this here is that the Government Finance Officers of America provides a best practice that says that municipalities should consider refundings that are in excess of 3% of the, of the prior debt. Here, we're over 6%, so we're more than two times that minimum threshold. So the next two slides on page five and six breaks out the annual savings by, so on page five, you can see what the annual savings for the general fund is by fiscal year. The savings is going to range anywhere from $121,000 up to a high of $131,000 over the next nine years. And then as, again, these are multiple series of bonds, so as those bonds are retired, and there's fewer bonds outstanding, that's when the savings kind of steps down. Page six then reflects the sewer operating fund, so these are the annual cash flow savings by fiscal year, you know, anywhere from $10,000 to $12,000 a year of debt service savings for that fund. So what we did in the last two slides now is, is kind of give you an idea of what the impact would be to the general fund debt service. So on the, the earlier resolution that you, you were, you were voting on, reflected the $20 million of issuance for the school program. So here, what we've done is layered that on top of what your existing general fund debt service is, and then, and then further layered on the savings, so you get an idea of what the total debt service impact would be as a result of this refunding. And then we took a similar approach on, on slide eight for the sewer operating fund. So here is what the existing sewer operating fund debt service looks like, and then layering on top of that, the savings from those particular bonds.
Thank you. Do councilors have questions for Mr. Lindsay or Director Landry? Councilors of Perry?
What is the cost of making the transition? Is there a cost to redeeming the, the services for redeeming the old bonds and issuing new bonds? What do we have to pay in addition to the money we're borrowing?
So there, the, the bonds are redeemable without penalty. So we're redeeming them at 100 cents on the dollar. So there's no payment, no prepayment penalty in that respect. However, there are associated issuance costs, and that would be estimated at roughly $200,000. Those issuance costs would be capitalized into the bond issue, so it would not be charged to the general fund budget, but it would rather be included in the borrowing amount. The savings numbers that I showed you were net of those issuance costs.
So that was considered?
Yes.
And coming to the conclusion that we have roughly 1.5 million in total savings?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
We have Councillor Borlon and Melendez.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate you guys' opportunity to look at any cost savings that can be generated, and taking advantage of opportunities to make the town have a positive profit. Thank you.
Councillor Melendez.
How much longer is this extending the date of maturity, if at all?
It's not extending the date at all. What we've done is we've matched up the maturity dates on the new bonds to those of the existing bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councilors? Okay, seeing no, I'm sorry, Councillor Franco.
So I was just, I know you explained it in depth, but let me just question this. Hold on one second. All right, so what does it exactly mean by the not exceeding $24 million? And this is on my, I don't know if you have the exact same papers that I do, send me. It's on page 30 of the packet, and it's basically the, I don't know, the third paragraph. And here, it's saying, "The amount of the authorization not exceeding $24 million is higher than the amounts projected by Hilltop Securities. The reason for this is to provide flexibility to ensure that there is sufficient funds in the escrow on the call date to refund the bonds in the event that interest earnings are lower than expected." Can you just explain that a little bit?
Sure. So there's a number of moving parts to the, to the transaction. So if we back up a second, and simply what we're doing is we're taking those prior bonds that are outstanding and we're replacing with new bonds. But because the bonds are not currently callable on, on the day that we close, they're going to be, continue to exist until a certain point in time. So using that 2013 bonds as an example, that run out through '22, there will need to be interest payments that come, that are made by the escrow account that we established until we hit that October of '22 payment. So that's roughly $1 million of interest payments that'll be, need to be accounted for and included in the borrowing amount. We will offset that to a certain extent by, because the money will be placed into the escrow account and be in that escrow account for two years until we hit the final call date, we can reinvest that and have some interest earnings that are generated to help offset the amount that we borrow. However, in an attempt to be conservative here, so we didn't have to come back to you and ask for a second time, if rates continue to fall, is we made a conservative assumption on what that rate of return would be, all right? And then the final, the final piece to this, if you look back on, if you refer to page four of my presentation, you notice that the par amount of the prior bonds, 21, call it 22 million, is less than the new amount that we'd be issuing. One of the other sources of funding for this is because of the town's strong credit rating, when we sell the bonds in the market, interest, investors will actually be willing to pay a premium. So they will pay more than 100 cents on the dollar for the new bonds, and that really accounts for what that difference is in the face value between the old bonds and the new bonds. However, again, in an effort to be conservative, we didn't account for that, that new issue premium in, in the sizing for the resolutions. So we're looking, asking for a total of $24 million, which needs to fund that $22.9 million plus the issuance cost, which rounds it up to just over $23 million, and we rounded that number off to an even million dollar increment. I'll say two additional things with respect to the resolution. One, it only pertains to the refunding bonds. So it does not apply to the new, to new capital-type financing. So, for example, the earlier two projects that were discussed. So the town could not issue up to that $24 million and use that money for any other purpose other than this refinancing. One, and two, there was a sunset provision, you'll notice, in the actual resolution. So it ends in June of '21. So if, if for some reason, we aren't able to get the transaction in the market before rates rise, this, this, this particular resolution does sunset in June of next year.
Okay. And then, so you're obviously watching the market, as you have on your presentation here, because that was one of my notes, like, when was the last time you looked at rates? Because it wasn't in my original packet, so that was one of my questions that were answered. So the rates are expected, they're just, because the market's so volatile right now, as, are they expected to keep going down? And when would you see that a good lock-in time would be?
That's a great question, and it's, it's a difficult one to answer. We, we have a calendar that, so there's, there is a lot of volatility, and what's driving the volatility now is really centered around the fears over coronavirus, and how that's going to affect, first and foremost, the U.S. economy, and then ultimately, the global economy. We're really not trying to time the market and find the bottom here. We have some short-term notes for the school project that come due at the end of April. So we are planning on financing, putting the financing plan in place so that we would have funds sufficient to pay off those short-term notes and convert them into long-term bonds, which was the first item you, you voted on. So we're working towards that date. If, if we see an increase in rates in the near term, we can accelerate that schedule. But to be honest, we're really not trying to time the market and find the bottom. We know rates are at historic lows, as we demonstrated on page two. We're continuing to work towards that, that target date of April 30th.
All right. And so as you're saying, like, everybody's rushing to do these type of things right now, is that going to slow the process down?
It should not, no. We're, we're well into the, the longer lean-tight items, if you will, gathering information, preparing the offering statement. We've got the schedule together, and so, no, I don't expect that it, that it will.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on 2020-168, refunding of general obligation bonds, lots A and B. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. So at this point, it is 8:14. The Cal is going to go into recess, so that we can then convene the special town council meeting and act on these items. So we are in recess at 8:14 for the Cal.
Can we take a break?
That is what I was going to ask you, if you wanted to take care of the special council meeting first and then break. Shall we take care of the special council meeting first and then break? We only have three items to do, and there shouldn't be much discussion, so. You want to break instead now?
If we can plow through.
All right, let's go.
Plow through. Okay. So we are on, so you have another packet that came in the mail to you. We are, call to order the town council's special meeting agenda for Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. It is 8:15. All councilors are present, with the exception of Councillor O'Bree, who notified that she could not be present. New business, 2020-120, Sealy School Properties scheduling public hearing for sale of municipal property. Page two, we are on to Councillor Borlon.
I make a resolution, a resolution to schedule a public hearing for the sale of the William Sealy School property, whereas the Town of Groton owns excessive buildings and properties that no longer needed, are no longer needed for the public uses, and whereas the town has been marketing the William Sealy School property for over a decade, and whereas the town has been working with the Selected Preferred Development Team, Donmar, as the purchasing entity, on a proposal for the site, and whereas the Connecticut General Statute, Section 7, 163E, requires a public hearing by the legislative body on the sale of real property owned by the municipality that has the value exceeding $10,000, and whereas the Town of Groton is prepared to enter into an option to purchase for the, I'm sorry, I lost my spot.
You're good.
One second. Sorry. eventual, where am I? Purchase of the property by Donmar after authorization by the town council, and now there, there be, therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to schedule a public hearing for April 7th, 2020, for purpose of selling the William Sealy School property, consistent with CGS 7-163E. I so move.
Move by Borlon, seconded by Heed. And this is the item we just discussed and committed to the whole. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2020-120, Sealy School Properties scheduled public hearing for sale of municipal property, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to the second item, which was the second sheet that you received. You should have a revised sheet at your place setting. That says 2020-166, approving amount of bonds to be issued in FYE 2020. And I believe we are on Councillor Melendez.
Resolution approving amount of general obligation bonds and general obligation bond anticipation notes to be sold, whereas the Town of Groton authorized $8,230,000 sewer, sewer bonds for improvements to the water pollution control facility pursuant to ordinance number 283, and whereas ordinance number 283 authorizes the town council to determine the amount of bonds to be sold, therefore be it resolved that $7,45,000 general obligation sewer bonds be sold pursuant to said ordinance, whereas the Town of Groton authorized $184,500,000 of school bonds for the Groton 2020 Plan pursuant to ordinance number 284, and whereas ordinance number 284 authorizes the town manager and the finance director to determine the amount of bonds to be sold, therefore be it resolved that $20 million general obligation bonds and $56 million general obligation bond anticipation notes be sold pursuant to said ordinance. I so move.
Move by Melendez, seconded by Borlon. Any discussion? This is one we just did in Cal. Seeing none, all those in favor of 2020-166 approving amount of bonds to be issued in FYE 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And so we are on to 2020-168, one, refunding of general obligation bonds, lots A and B, on page four. Oh, and it looks like Councillors of Perry drew the short straw.
I would like to pass that to Councillor Baumgartner.
Resolution authorizing the issuance.
There, I don't think there, there isn't a revision for this one.
I got one too.
There is revision, there's a number change.
Wait, wait, wait. Let me find it. Oh, I got it. Thank you. Let me cross this one out then. Hold on one second, Councillor Baumgartner, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
I believe on that one, originally, one resolution was in the packet, ended on the A and B. Two resolutions in there, that's what the revision is.
Thank you. That explains. All right. Councillor Baumgartner, please.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of not exceeding 22,000, oh, 22 million refunding bonds for payment of the outstanding principal of an interest and any call premium on any portion of the town of $16,305,000, $16,305,000 general obligation refunding bonds issued of 2011, lot A, $19,600,000 general obligation refunding bonds issued of 2013, lot A, and $8,945,000 general obligation bonds issued of 2014, lot A, and costs related to, related thereto resolved, one, that the Town of Groton issue its refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed $22 million, to the proceeds of which are hereby appropriated, one, to fund one or more escrows, and to apply the balance held in such escrows, together with the investment earnings thereon, to the payment in whole or in part, as to be determined by the town manager and the director of finance of the town, of the outstanding principal and of interest, and any call premium on the town's $16,305,000 general obligation refunding bonds issued of 2011, lot A, consisting at initial issue of $10,630,000 school bonds and $5,675,000 general, general purpose bonds, $19,000, $19,600,000 general obligation refunding bonds issued of 2013, lot A, consisting at an initial issue of $12,308,000 school bonds and $6,752,000 general purpose bonds, and $8,945,000 general obligation bonds issued of 2014, lot A, consisting at initial issue of $8,945,000 general purpose bonds, including the payment of interest accrued on said bonds to the date of payment, and two, to pay the costs of issuance of the refunding bonds authorized hereby, including legal fees, consultants' fees, trustee or escrow agent fees, underwriters' fees, net interest and other financing costs, and other costs related to the payment of the outstanding bonds described above. The refunding bonds shall be issued pursuant to Section 7-30370C of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of 1958. of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of 1958, as amended, and any other enabling acts. The bonds shall be general obligations of the town secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the town. The town does hereby covenant and agree with the holders of the bonds that in each year while any such bonds are outstanding, it will levy and collect ad valorem taxes upon all taxable properties within the town in an amount sufficient with such other funds of the town as shall be available for such purpose to pay the interest and principal on the bonds as the same become due and payable. Two, the town manager and the director of finance of the town shall sign the bonds by their manual or fesmile signatures. The law firm of Day Pitney LLP is designated as bond counsel to the, to approve the legality of the bonds. The town manager and the director of finance are authorized to determine the amount, date, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form, and other details of the bonds to designate one or more banks or trust companies to be certifying bank, registrar, transfer agent, and paying agent for the bonds to provide for the keeping of a record of the bonds, to sell the bonds at public or private sale, to deliver the bonds, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds. Three, that the town hereby declares its official intent under federal income tax regulation, Section 1, 150-2, that consists of the refunding may pay, may be paid from temporary advances of available funds, and that except to the extent reimbursed from grant monies, the town reasonably expects to reimburse any such advances from the proceeds of borrowings in an aggregate principal amount not in excess of the amount of borrowing authorized above for the refunding. The town manager and the director of finance are authorized to amend such declaration of official intent as they deem necessary or advisable and to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of the interests of the bonds authorized by this resolution, if issued on a tax exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years. Four, the town manager and the director of finance are authorized to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds. Five, the town manager and the director of finance are authorized to take all other action which is necessary or desirable to enable the town to effectuate the refunding of all or a portion of the town's outstanding $6,305 million general obligation refunding bonds issued of 2011, lot A, $19,600.
$16 million. Sorry, we want to get it right. We don't want you to start all over.
$16,305,000 general obligation refunding bonds issued of 2011, lot A, $19,600,000 general obligation refunding bonds issued of 2013, lot A, and $8,945,000 general obligation bonds issued of 2014, lot A, and to issue refunding bonds authorized hereby for such purposes, including but not limited to the entrance into agreements on behalf of the town with underwriters, trustees, escrow agents, and others to facilitate the issuance of the refunding bonds, the escrow of the proceeds thereof and investment earnings thereon, and the payment of the outstanding bonds in whole or in part. Six, that the above authorization to issue refunding bonds shall lapse on June 30th, 2021. Refer to the, refer to the RTM 6.53. Yeah, why not? Resolution authorizing the issuance of not exceeding 2 million refunding bonds for payment of the outstanding principal of an interest and any call premium on any portion of the town of Groton's $2,710,000 general obligation sewer refunding bonds issued of 2011, lot B, and costs related thereto. Resolved that the town of Groton issue its refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed $2 million, the proceeds of which are hereby appropriated. One, to fund one or more escrows and to apply the balance held in such escrows, together with the investment earnings thereon, to the payment in whole or in part as to be determined by the town manager and the director of finance of the town of the outstanding principal of an interest in any call premium on the town's $2,710,000 general obligation sewer refunding bonds issued of 2011, lot B, including the payment of interest accrued on said bonds to the date of payment, and two, to pay costs of issuance of the refunding bonds authorized hereby, including legal fees, consultant fees, trustee or escrow agent fees, underwriters' fees, net interest, and other financing costs and other costs related to the payment of the outstanding bonds described above. The refunding bond shall be issued pursuant to Section 7-370C of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of 1958, as amended, and any other enabling acts. The bond shall be general obligations of the town secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the town. The town does hereby covenant and agree with the holders of the bonds that in each year while any such bonds are outstanding, it will levy and collect the ad valorem taxes upon all taxable properties within the town other than properties within the city of Groton in an amount sufficient with such other funds of the town as shall be available for such purpose to pay the interest and principal on the bonds as the same become due and payable. Two, the town manager and the director of finance of the town shall sign the bonds by their manual or fesmile signatures. The law firm of Day Pitney LLP is designated as bond counsel to approve the legality of the bonds. The town manager and the director of finance are authorized to determine the amount, date, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form, and other details of the bonds to designate one or more banks or trust companies to be certifying bank, registrar, transfer agent, and paying agent for the bonds to provide for the keeping of all records of the bonds, to sell the bonds at public or private sale, to deliver the bonds, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds. Three, the town hereby declares its official intent under federal income tax regulation, Section 1, 150-2. That costs of the refunding may be paid from temporary advances of available funds, and that except to the extent reimbursed from grant monies, the town reasonably expects to reimburse any such advances from the proceeds of borrowings in an aggregate principal amount not in excess of the amount of borrowing authorized above for the refunding. The town manager and the director of finance are authorized to amend such declaration of official intent as they deem necessary or advisable and to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds authorized by the resolution if issued on a tax exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings in the United States in future years. Four, that the town manager and the director of finance are authorized to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such as terms they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with the applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds. Five, that the town manager and the director of finance are authorized to take all other action which is necessary or desirable to enable the town to effectuate the refunding of all or a portion of the town's outstanding $2,710,000 general obligation sewer refunding bonds issued of 2011, lot B, and to issue refunding bonds authorized hereby for such purposes, including but not limited to the entrance into agreements on behalf of the town with underwriters, trustees, escrow agents, and others to facilitate the issuance of the refunding bonds, the escrow of the proceeds thereof and investment earnings thereon, and the payment of the outstanding bonds in whole or in part. Six, that the above authorization to issue refunding bonds shall lapse on June 30th, 2021. Refer to the RTM 6.5.3, so moved.
Second. Move by Baumgartner, seconded by Franco. Well done councillor Baumgartner.
Wow, I think that's the longest one ever.
No, well, now he gets his recess after we vote, so. Any comments, questions, seeing none, all those in favor, 2020-168 refunding of general obligation bonds lot A and B, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously with 8:00. And that is all for the special town council meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
So moved.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Sir Perry. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are adjourned the special town council meeting at 8:33, and I will have us take a five-minute recess before we reconvene the COW. Thank you, it is 8:42, and the town council committee of the whole is back in session. We are on item 5F, 2020-122, Sealy School Property Option Agreement. And this is on page 36 in your packet, and we are on, councillor Parker.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to authorize the town manager to sign the option agreement with Donmar Development Corporation after the April 7th, 2020 public hearing, and to recommend the sale of the former William Sealy School to the RTM, ISO move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Heath. And we have a team of people here to tell us about this. Mr. Reiner, please.
Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Here with me tonight, Eric Callahan from our town attorney's office, Rob Montesi from Goman York, and our preferred developer, the number, representatives from the DeJoy family from Donmar. And here we are bringing before you tonight an option agreement for us to move forward to enter into an option agreement with Donmar, selected as our preferred developer for the Sealy property. We worked with Goman York over many months, over a year, marketing this property. Working with Donmar, we had held a public outreach meeting on February 19th to present a concept of the project to the public. And we will be having a public hearing on April 7th regarding the town's requirement to have a public hearing for the sale of this property. And after that public hearing, we would be looking to have the council approve of this option agreement.
Do councillors have questions? Councillor Franco.
All right, so I read the whole agreement, and I have some questions. I have actually quite a few questions. So I'll start off with the first one. What is, what is considered the option period? I'm on page 40, section 3A. It says during the option period purchasers shall provide the seller with a written notice to confirm purchasers intended use of the premises. And goes into a bunch of details there.
So, in section one of the agreement, the option period is initially 12 months, and there's an ability to extend it for an additional six months, so total potential of 18 months.
Okay. And then, so then it's stating in this area that the purchaser, I can't even say it right now, shall provide the seller with written notice to confirm purchasers intended use of the premises. It'll be a preliminary conceptual site plan for the same if the option is exercised, as set for it with a request. And it goes in, it's like, they're supposed to come and tell the seller what they're going to do. And if there's any kind of issues, then we would negotiate on that with an extension of a 30-day period if we were negotiating well. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
All right, so then to continue, it then goes on to say that they should, um, the developer also must be consistent with the development objectives listed in the general terms and conditions in section six. And it also lists seven items, and that's on our page 41. So my question is, on these two things, this still has to come back to the council, and we have to approve it, is that what you're saying, with those conditions there?
I think the way that it's written, it could either go back to the council, or if the plan is consistent with the concept plan that was already presented, it could move forward if the council wanted us to bring it back to them. We certainly could bring that conceptual plan as the design and engineering gets a little bit more refined.
Okay, and can you, well, then who is considered the seller?
The town is the seller.
And who would that be, then, that approves that as the seller?
So that could be, I think, part of the way it's written in there, and we can certainly read that through for a second or two, but I think it's, part of it references the Planning and Zoning Commission as they approve the plan. But also if the council wants to see the site plan again as it's further refined, that's something we could, that's why we have that 30-day period.
Yeah, that's, so that's my question is, who is the seller, and who are they bringing back their design to, to make sure it's approved? And who is going to do that approval?
If the council requests that, we can bring it back to the council.
Do you have any?
The seller is the town of Groton. And within the agreement, it references the 280-unit apartment project. And so what you would be approving is an option for them to purchase the property for that purpose. And we've put some guidelines in here about what we, what our expectations are. If it deviates from that plan, then we would bring it to your attention. If you want to approve the conceptual plan regardless, then we can certainly take that back to you.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is because in here it says the purchaser shall supply the seller with the following information in order for the seller to confirm whether it approves the purchaser's conceptual plan. So it has to be approved, is that's why I'm asking, who is going to approve that?
If it's consistent with the plan.
I'm not trying to be combative. I'm just simply trying to get an answer as who's the seller and who's going to be the approver. Is it going to be planning, is it going to be the council, who's?
It could be the planning department, if it's consistent with the conceptual plan and meets those seven standards. And as attorney Callahan had said, if it's in conflict with that design, or if it's something that the council wants to see the plan, we certainly can elevate it to that level. Because we have 30 days to do it, so we have time. I think it really depends on your preference.
Okay. I just think that's something we should maybe narrow down. Then on page 42, I'm in the middle of the big paragraph, and it states, if there's a dispute between the parties concerning whether the purchaser cured any specific deficiencies as provided in this section, then as a prerequisite determining the agreement and the option, the seller and the purchaser shall attempt in good faith for a period of 30 days to resolve and or settle such dispute. First by direct negotiation. So it goes on in here to say there's going to be arbitration. Is that typical of what would happen? And what kind, I don't exactly understand the dispute.
So the reason that there's a dispute resolution policy in there is because Donmar anticipates expending a lot of money doing due diligence and getting to the point where it's going to carry this project forward. And if there's some dispute on whether they've met our expectations with the conceptual plan, they didn't want us to just say, we're terminating this agreement. They wanted some ability to sit down and try to resolve it informally, and if not, bring it to some neutral party to say, have we met the requirements of this agreement or not? Because they're investing a lot, as is the town, in this relationship. So that's why that's in there.
And so does that mean the arbitration would have the final say? The arbitrator?
The, um, yes, they would have a say whether they met that, that plan or not.
All right, so towards the bottom, can I keep going, or are there, are there people who have questions?
Go for it.
So then down towards the bottom, it's the purchase price and deposit, and it states here, we're selling the premises for a dollar. And it goes on to discuss the environmental obligations. And it says the purchaser at its sole cost and expense agrees to conduct the full and complete demolition, environmental remediation of the entirety of the premises, including any environmental currently located, improvements currently located thereon following the closing. So basically what this is saying, that they're going to demolish the building, remove it, do all the remediation, all the. do all the remediation, all the costs associated with that. And we're selling it for a dollar. Because from what I'm gathering and from what I've heard, the remediation is going to cost a substantial amount of money. Is that correct?
Yes. The estimate that Donmar has received thus far is for approximately $2.1 million. And there's still some other costs that are contingencies that haven't been factored into that as they move forward.
I think that's fully understandable. So then on page forty-four, I just wanted to question four-point-four. It says no financing contingency, which I wouldn't expect there to be a financing clause on a dollar. But I'm curious as to the point of, there's no contingency upon their financing of the whole project though. Is that correct?
Correct.
So they can't come back, or you can't come back and state, "We're not going forward because our financing fell through." Is that what this is saying?
Well, there's also, there's other contingencies that if they don't actually pull a building permit and start construction within a certain period of time, there's other factors in there.
Okay. So I just wanted to see if there was no contingency on them, that they're financing on their side. And let's just say something didn't happen at that point, and they backed out because they only have a doll. Like, I know they're going to invest a lot of money in planning and all kinds of things to get to certain points to be able to build. But my question is, what is invested in there prior to the sale? Like, because we only have a dollar on deposit, basically, right? Are we asking for the full dollar as a deposit? So it's like a dollar. So that's what my question is. I mean, I know they have a lot invested in this project, I'm sure, but-
In addition, any other due diligence, environmental reports, things that they put into it, if they walk away, we get possession of those documents.
Okay.
Those all cost a lot of money to do.
Okay. No, I know there's a lot being done prior to that. So then I'm on page forty-seven, and it says, "The closing of title shall take place within sixty calendar days following the option notice." So when is the actual option notice finalized so that this would be taking place? The closing would be taking place. You're saying between the twelve months to eighteen months?
That's right. They have within that range to provide their notice.
Let's see what else. So then I was just, I think it's page fifty-two. I'm on section twenty-two B. It states, "The seller will fix the assessment of improvements in buildings under the construction in connection with phase one of the project or up to twelve months during construction, such that no taxes will be paid on buildings or improvements under construction on the premises during said time period." It also states in here that they're not looking to have any fixed taxes either. Is that the correct stating of that?
So that section also at the very end says, states that this is an intent, and it does not guarantee any type of fixed assessment agreement. Basically, what we're looking to do is while they're constructing the project, they will pay taxes on the land, but not on what they're actually building. Once they get their certificate of occupancy, then they'd be paying taxes on both the land and anything constructed.
Only one, like, the C of it, certificate of occupancy, is that what you're saying?
Yes. But that's an agreement that would, in the future, have to be approved by the council. But this is just setting an intent of how we'd like to move forward.
Okay. And I think, I think that might be it. I think I'm good now. Thanks.
So on page forty, I think, I just wanted to say a couple of things that, hopefully, to reassure the public. It's saying that the approval of the plan should not be denied as long as the plan is consistent with the plan presented to the seller. And then on, I had it marked and I let it go. The development schedule, starting on forty-eight, goes through, and it talks about how it has to go through inland wetlands and traffic administration and all the various steps in the process. So there are steps along the way where the expression you've used before is where the town has a bite at it, where the interests of the town will be addressed by the various commissions as the project progresses. So that was reassuring that I saw that in there. Are there other counselors who wish to speak at this point? No? Counselor Bordelone?
Just for clarification purposes, because some people have spoke about this in different capacities, there is no TIF money being used for this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want that on the record. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak before I go back to Counsel Franco? Counsel Franco?
So what we're doing tonight is giving the town manager the right to sign an option agreement with Donmar after the public hearing and recommend the sale. So my question is, I don't have a problem with you signing. I would like to clarify the section three-point A and three-point B of who the seller is and who's going to-
Since it's the interest, we will bring it back to the council.
That's all I want to have clarification on, on how that's going to work, because I wasn't, I'm not sure. And it goes on to say, these little list of items with, like, traffic circulation, road improvements, and parking. So I just don't, I want to make sure that as a council, at least my viewpoint is, as a council, that we see this and make sure that we know what we're approving before it goes through. Because there's a lot of concern about those type of things, and I just want to make sure that it's viewed.
Counselor Parker?
Normally, when new buildings come up or new changes on a building, it has to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve those types of changes. Because they will, your department will make sure that they've done all their steps first. We're just approving a portion of it. So you want the plan to come back after the planning and zoning's approved it. Because it's-
This is stating that the concept, as they further refine their concept, they would come back to the council. So all of the questions on traffic studies may not be completed at that point in time because they won't be doing extra due diligence, maybe on traffic and some other things, until after they get the inland wetlands approval. So I think the question is, if the council wants to further look at and refine that as the developer refines their concept plan, I think that's great. But it's also, I want to make sure we have realistic expectations that they're not going to have everything designed and engineered at that point because there's still steps that need to be taken. And that will be before they make application to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Burt wanted to say something?
No, it's covered.
Okay.
So I think the intent in that section was, if the council wants to review it, we certainly can bring it back. But if the plan was consistent with the concept plan already presented, we would just, we staff would move it along to the Planning and Zoning Commission. But if the council wants to see it, we certainly don't have any issue or problem with that.
So, Counsel Parker, I'm sorry, I did not finish.
We will not be approving the conceptual plan. We don't have to approve that. Am I understanding that correctly? If you guys are bringing it back to us, there's no resolution to do that.
Well, I think that's the question that's before you right now that's been brought up by Counsel Franco.
I'm just trying to understand Counsel Franco's intent.
So normally, normally, tell us how this works.
So normally, someone would make an application before, first, they would come talk to us before they start spending a lot of money on engineering, show us a concept plan similar to what has been presented publicly. Okay, yep, that meets the general intent. Why don't you do a little bit more design on that project? They'd come back with some preliminary engineering, flag the wetlands, identify how stormwater is going to be handled, which is, you know, our rainwater runoff, and what the density of the project is. We'd meet with, staff would meet with the applicant, not just staff from Planning and Development, but our Public Works Department, the fire marshal, the building official, and others. We'd then give them some initial feedback. They would, and if the application met zoning, we would get, and all the planning regulations, we would then continue to send them through the process, have them submit to inland wetlands. They would go through that process. At the same time, they could also submit for a site plan. The only tricky part would be if there were changes to the inland wetlands or if the inland wetlands commission had any changes on the site plan. If it was going concurrently with the planning and zoning approval, that could just kind of mess things up. They might have to go and redesign a couple of things. So we normally see it go through inland wetlands. Once they have that approval, then they would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval to be, making sure they meet all the zoning.
So it would not normally come back to the town council once we agree to sell the property? Granted, we haven't been selling property lately, so this is kind of our first time.
The-
We did the-
Gold Star Highway, we didn't see much of a concept with that site initially because that was just an option agreement. They were, they needed to do a lot more work with the development team that they had. The plans that we've seen thus far for the Sealy property are much more refined than what we saw for the Gold Star Highway property. That, in that particular instance, for Gold Star Highway, the council does have to approve of the concept plan for that site.
Okay. So what will happen timeline-wise if you bring it back to the council? And my question is where, because it's not normal to come back to us, where in the process would it happen and how does it affect the overall timeline?
I think it would happen somewhere, just while they're doing their due diligence. They're going to continue to work with their architects and engineers. Once there's a signed option agreement, then they could feel much more comfortable spending a lot more money. Up until this point in time, they've spent a considerable amount of money with a lot of risk, with no guarantee that they'll be selected as the preferred developer. Once that option agreement is signed, they'll start doing a lot of testing on-site. And the timelines that are, that are in that agreement are pretty aggressive. They want to get out there, understand what's in the building, as well as getting through the permitting process. I don't think coming back to the council will substantially impact the timeline.
I want to hear from Mr. Burt, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of bringing it back to the council to see, you know, there's obviously desire. It doesn't impact anything. So let's just plan on bringing it back.
Okay. Counsel Franco?
So you're saying the Route 184 plan, their conceptual plan has to come back to the council?
Correct.
And what other property have we sold that they didn't have to come back to the council with a conceptual plan?
We actually have not entered into any other option agreements.
So this is not a usual thing that we do?
No.
I think you meant-
So that's how it was-
Typical development, not selling property, just typical development process.
Yes.
All right.
We're still kind of charting some, entering uncharted waters with some of these.
Okay. So I just wanted to be clear that it's not something that we normally do, and I'm not bringing up an item that is, like, far-fetched to say that the conceptual plan should come before the council.
No, not at all.
Okay. Because, I mean, I read this pretty thoroughly, and what I took out of there was what I said to you. But I wanted to clarify who the seller was because I didn't know if it was planning or if it was us. And that's the clarification that I'm looking for. That's all. Mr. Burt?
I think it's a good chance to not only update the council but the public as to where the process is by doing that. And maybe some timelines will be adjusted by then. We can update everybody on that, so.
So are we going?
Yeah, we're bringing it back.
You're going to bring it back? What do you mean, change the wording on the document or are you going to?
I don't think there's any wording changed here in the seller. We'll just bring it back for approval for, you know, concurrence on the concept plan.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Bordelone?
Yeah, I was just, some of my questions were answered after that. I was just going to say that I think it's good transparency for the public and the community. I think the more that we're in the public, the more they feel like they have a grasp on the information. So I always say, more information is better than no information. And any opportunity that you have to bring something forward that's not going to slow down the process, I completely agree with Counsel Franco and Town Manager, Mr. Burt, that I think it would be appropriate and important to the public community if we can do such. And once again, if it's not something that we typically do or we haven't done a lot of, I think it's just good practice to get into, and it's something that we can set the precedent with and start doing. So maybe in future, it might be more applicable to have more clarification because the document does state that the seller is the town manager. But I also think that, you know, we don't want to slow the process down with every D V, you know. But if there is something that changes, or even just a report saying there has been no change is also, sometimes some people just need that. I also can't emphasize enough the need for the projects that are coming on board or having an extra link online where you can click and updates are kind of just there. That would be a nice way to be able to have the public access that, as well as town council, without having to come forward for an actual public discussion. You could just have the resplur, the dump, you know, this one, that one, and you can just click 184, and you can see, and I've seen this on the other town pages. And so that would be something, I think, that would be very helpful. But I agree with Counsel Franco.
Counsel Heat?
I just, a request for Mr. Reiner. Could you let us know when these things, either for the Sealy or the Mystic Rural School, when those things go to the inland board, when it goes to the different boards and commissions, as to what we can attend? Thanks.
Very good. Very good.
Yeah.
Any other counselors who haven't spoken yet wish to speak? Back to Counsel Bordelone.
I just want to say, I'm excited about the project, and I love the presentation that you guys had given, that we had. And I think it's great, and it's, you know, a needed project here, so I wish you guys all the best.
Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on 2021-120 Sealy School Property Option Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, so move unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it for that item. Thank you for coming up again this evening, gentlemen. Safe travel.
Best of luck with everything.
So we are on to, I don't remember who that was. I have a little, that was Parker. All right. So we are on to 2021-134 Hill Road Land Transfer. And we are on to Counsel Franco, please. On page fifty-six. Do we have a motion on this?
Fifty-six.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I make a motion that the staff recommends the council to? Is that what I'm doing?
Mr. Burt is-
I would just say, recommend the council refer the sale. You know, start from there. Wouldn't you say, John?
Yes.
He wants you to start with recommend, council recommends, or make a motion to recommend that the council, is that what you wanted her to say?
Yeah, perfect.
All right. Make a motion to recommend that the council refer the sale of this property at 134 Hill Road to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review per CGS eight-dash-twenty-four, determine whether a public hearing will be held, and if so, schedule- Is this really a motion?
I'm sorry, this is not making any sense to me.
I think part of it is, we also need to determine if a public hearing will be held and if so-
Until you get the appraisal, we won't know.
Yeah.
If there's appraisals being done. It's just a small sliver, but if it hits $10,000, then you have to have a public hearing.
That's going to be part of the motion?
So-
I don't think the motion much matters. It tells you generally what the resolution is going to say.
All right, I'll start over, I guess. I make a motion recommending that the council refer the sale of this property at 134 Hill Road to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review per CGS eight-dash-twenty-four, determine whether a public hearing will be held, and if so, schedule a public hearing and refer the sale to the RTM. I so move.
Second? Moved by Franco and seconded by Bordelone.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Burt?
When do you expect the appraisal to be done?
Within a few weeks. I think really, the question that we're asking is, we expect this property to come in below $10,000 for an appraisal. If it does, does the council want to have a public hearing or not? If you don't, then that's the determination. If the property came in above $10,000, then we're required to have a public hearing.
As well as to go through RTM?
Correct.
So do you need that decision from us this evening?
Of whether or not, if it's below $10,000, of whether or not you want the public hearing, yes or no.
Okay. So is everybody understanding where, just before we start discussion, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. So they're doing an appraisal. If it comes in over $10,000, that kicks off a series of events that have to happen, including a public hearing here and a referral to the RTM for approval. If the appraisal comes in under $10,000, we are not required to send it to the RTM, nor are we required to have a public hearing as per Connecticut general statutes, correct?
But you may have a public hearing.
So you need us to decide if it comes in under $10,000- So you need us to decide if it comes in under $10,000, do we want to have a public hearing on the sale of this? So you need that answered in addition to us passing this motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're clear on that part, so now we'll get to discussion. Counsel Zepari?
I'm concerned that, you know, the person that wants to acquire this land made a request, and the implication I got out of the letter was he wants an out-and-out grant of the land. We have granted land that way below market values in the past to entities that are going to put something on the land that will return to the town in the form of an increased tax base. This is not the case here. This fellow wants the land as part of, just to extend the property that his business is on. I think we should be sure that we sell this at market value and not have a sweetheart deal for it. I don't, I don't know the man, I don't have anything against him. I just would like to see us get what the property is worth. That's Town of Groton property. I know that it was given to the, the Paquonic Bridge Fire Company, and they, but it was a conditional gift so long as they used it to operate their fire station. They ceased operating the fire station, so that property automatically reverted to the town. It's town property, and it's not something that ran with that land when this fellow purchased it from the, the Paquonic Bridge Fire Company. So I think that when we sell it, when we transfer that property, we should get paid what the appraised value is. Is that the plan?
That could be determined, I mean, that's up to the council to determine. There has not been, hold on one second. So one of the things that happened, just to kind of give a little backstory on this, is when Paquonic Bridge Fire Department sold the property to a previous owner, all of the property went, and at that time, that previous owner had realized that, oh, this piece of property reverted back to the town, how do we resolve this issue, and had corresponded with the previous town manager about getting this property as part of going back from the town, back to that owner. This little sliver of property, we're talking about roughly 1,300 square feet, so not, not something that's significant in size. I think right now, there's a little bit of parking and storage, a little storage building that's on it. The intent of the applicant who's looking to move forward here is actually to have a connection from their property to the Paquonic Bridge, the boardwalk there. So having this property is not going to add significant value to their land, but I, I think we certainly could ask them to pay fair market value for it. I don't expect it to be a lot of money.
No, I don't expect it to be a lot of money either, but I just want to get the principle out. When we give land away, we should be expecting something back for it. In the case of the Sealy School, we're expecting a big building to go up on that with a lot of tenements and a lot of people living in there, and a lot of cars coming in, and the grand list is going to increase proportionate to the value of that property and those cars for the people that are living there. In this case, there's going to be no return to the town, so the transfer should be at market value.
There actually will be a transfer, you know, right now, that property, when Paquonic Bridge Fire Department owned the larger piece of it, the town wasn't necessarily getting paid taxes for it. While it's been vacant, we've been getting some tax revenue for it, but now we have someone looking to put a substantial amount of money into that building, so we will see a substantial increase in tax revenue. So there is some benefit, but if the council wants us to sell the property for what the appraisal value comes back for, I think that's certainly reasonable.
Okay. I would hope that that's going to be the process. There's no special return to the town, as I understand it. There's no problem, he's not going to develop that piece of land or his own land, development, the land he already owns is not going to be developed in such a way to increase the tax base or have any other beneficial effect on the town.
No, it will.
How will it do that?
Right now, it's a pretty rundown old firehouse.
Yeah.
That's not paying a lot of money in taxes to the town.
The firehouse isn't on that piece of land. The firehouse is on the land he already owns.
It's adjacent to it. This piece goes along with that, so it's part of the larger development project that he's doing. This 1,300-
He's not going to build on it, is he?
The only thing that he may build on this 1,300 square feet is an extension from that property to the existing boardwalk through there, and-
So it's on the rear of the property?
Yes.
It's on the rear of the bigger parcel, and if he clears out the overgrowth there, then you're saying it will connect to the coastal access point?
Correct, and, you know, some of that property right now is already inland wetlands. There's an existing shed, there's an existing concrete pad, there's two existing concrete pads and an existing shed. I don't have the site plans right in front of me. Either those will be demolished, or if he puts investment into those, we would see an increase in tax revenue from that.
I strongly believe that when we give property away, we should expect a value returned. If there's no significant value being returned to the town from that gift, then that should be transferred based on the appraised value of the land.
We have Counsel Bordelone, Hede, and Franco.
I just had a quick question. When did this come before us last?
It has, hasn't it?
Right. So I think, for me, if I was watching from home, that the motion that Counselor Franco read, not that she read it wrong, but what is written here is not very clear. And I almost feel like, even though I don't want to be the one to read it, but if I have to, I feel like we should give a little bit more background on this, because it's something that really, that motion doesn't really reflect what's going on, so people, for full transparency, understand some of this, like, I don't know, just the motion doesn't really reflect the paragraphs above it, is all.
I'm happy to read a little bit from the referral memo, which, I mean, we kind of just dove right into some of the discussions.
Right, we didn't give you a chance to say it, so go ahead.
That's why I was just bringing it back to that, is all.
"In October of 1992, the town transferred a small parcel of land to the Paquonic Bridge Fire Company located at 13 Fort Hill Road. It's a narrow strip of land on the southern end of the fire company's property that had been used for parking and storage of fire equipment. The quitclaim deed from the town to the fire company contained a clear reverter provision that would revert ownership of the strip of land back to the town should the premises no longer be used for fire protection services. The Paquonic Bridge Fire Company sold 13 Fort Hill Road, and the strip of land automatically reverted to town ownership. The owners, 13 Fort Hill Road LLC, submitted a site plan application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. During the review of this application, that's when we became aware of the ownership of the strip of this land. The current owner wasn't aware of that. The property owners have subsequently asked the town to quitclaim the land to them. They will have the property appraised to determine its value. The proposal to seller transfer public land must be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission, what we usually refer to as an 824 referral, and per 7-163E, similar to what we were talking with the last item, the council must hold a public hearing if the appraised property value is greater than $10,000. They may hold a public hearing if it's less than $10,000. So, and if it's more than $10,000, the town council also needs to refer the matter to the RTM for their approval. So if approved by the council, the town manager will be authorized to enter into contract to sell or transfer the property. So we're looking for direction from the council on what to do tonight, so if you want to sell it for fair market value based on the appraisal, if you wanted to gift it to them for a dollar. The land has very little value to the town from the perspective of, it's not going, we're not going to further extend the Paquonic Bridge boardwalk. It's a piece of property that has been cleared mostly, and it has a number of existing buildings, or what do they refer to, existing concrete pads on them already."
Okay, we have Counsel Hede and Franco.
So generally, I would be concerned about giving it away for free, because I wouldn't want to set a precedent. But that being said, it doesn't sound like the town owns any property around it except maybe the boardwalk?
We own the boardwalk property.
And what's the, if they choose not to buy it, is there a liability that goes along with maintaining the property?
There certainly could be, because there's an existing shed on a concrete pad and two other concrete pads on the site. So if we own it, what do we, we don't have a need for two concrete pads and a shed that abuts a commercial property.
All right, and then-
So then we would have the liability of taking down those buildings, which I'm sure is going to cost probably a few thousand dollars, probably more than the value of what the land actually is.
I think it would be good to know how much the value of the land is, so I definitely want to have an appraisal, but then maybe brought it back to us or something after that.
Counsel Franco?
So I have the map in here that was given to us. Actually, it's in here twice. But it doesn't really clear, it shows the whole property outlined, I guess, when Paquonic Bridge Fire Department had it, but it's not clearly defining the area that is the town's. And now that you're stating there's a shed and the concrete pad, it's at the south, which is it just, is it, has any of the parking lot area included in that at all? Or is there any other strip? Because it said it was 25 by 55.
So if you're looking at the plan from, I think there was an aerial included in your packet?
We have a map that has Fort Hill Road toward, on the north.
Yes.
This map?
Okay, so there's a little triangle that sticks out from the very bottom on the southern, southernmost end, southeasternmost end of that property.
Triangle?
No, a little bit of a rectangle.
Okay.
Sorry, did I say triangle?
Quadrilateral?
Yeah, okay.
My allergies are bothering me, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
This little highlighted section on that same map that you're looking at, so my map's a little bigger than yours, that section there.
So it goes, like, basically the dotted line goes, keeps going straight across?
Correct, so this was a piece that was, I think, originally cut off from the walkway property and added to the firehouse property.
Okay, so it's basically, it's locked. It's locked by water, and then it's locked by their property.
Well, it's locked by the, a portion of the walkway property and then their property, yes.
Because there's water surrounding, at least?
Yes.
Okay. So this was brought to the town's attention in 2016 by the purchaser's attorney, is that correct?
Correct.
And it was sent to Town Manager Mark Ovinter, and it's, it states here what the issue was going on, and do you have any idea why this wasn't taken care of at the time?
No.
When the purchase happened?
No. That was also purchased by a different entity.
Right, the first purchaser, because we are on purchaser number two at the moment.
Correct. I was not involved in that, that chain of events.
All right, so they were aware of it, the town was not, so did the town-
No, the town was aware of it. It was brought to the attention of the previous town manager, and I don't, it wasn't, it wasn't brought to my attention, so I don't know why the ball was dropped.
So when the deed went for the, to the first purchaser-
Yes.
-that part was not considered part of his deed?
No. Correct.
So he didn't pay tax on it or anything of that nature, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to clarify that part.
To my knowledge, to my knowledge.
So the town was aware, they didn't take, they just, you do not know why steps were not taken to correct this issue at the time?
No. It may have been that the, if I had to take an educated guess, that the previous owner, so property owner one after the, they purchased it from the firehouse, had ideas and plans to do something out there, but obviously those did not come to fruition, so they may have just let it sit.
Right. So is this, I don't know how else to say it, but this little piece of parcel, is it, it's not deeded in the town's name at the moment? Who's it deeded to right now?
No, it is. It was reverted back to, it's in town ownership today.
Today, when was that done?
When it was sold.
When the fire district sold it. It reverted to town ownership.
And, but you're saying, so the paperwork was taken here at that time?
I don't know if any actual paperwork is done.
So I'm asking him the questions, that's why, and then you're answering before he's answering, so I'm having an issue here. So my question being is, it was when the full property of Paquonic Bridge, they sold it, the new property owner got that portion of the property, they are deeded. This portion, you may not know if it was taken care of at that time, or if we just recently took care of it. Is that what you're trying to say?
Nothing, to my knowledge, has been done. At the time of the sale of that, I wasn't involved in the sale of the property. I don't know if legal documentation was made that quitclaimed it or did something else to revert it back to the town, other than the original sale said it shall revert back to the town.
Right.
So-
So just because the contract says it shall revert to the town, when the whole title search and all those other things, that may have been a step the town had to take, but you don't see that, maybe it was taken up?
I don't want to make assumptions.
So we don't know at the moment who's, I mean, other than that paperwork that says it reverts back to the town, if it's actually in the town's name at the time, right now. Legally, in the records department.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have an answer.
Yeah, I-
We have our attorney here. How convenient.
Yeah.
I, the way I understood it was, when the fire district sold it, it automatically reverted back to the town.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Would you please just introduce yourself for everybody, please? Thank you, sir.
Hi, Rich Cody.
Thank you.
Is this on? Rich Cody with the Town Attorney's Office. John actually asked me to look at this a couple of weeks ago. The question's one of title to the property. When, when the town deeded the property to the fire department, it reserved the right in the deed itself to recover title upon a certain event. And it's, there's two kinds of reverters. One is by right of reentry, one is by an automatic reverter, and it depends upon the language. In this particular case, it was an automatic reverter. So when the, when that event happened, when the property was sold, title automatically reverted as a matter of law back to the town's ownership. For whatever reason, the property around it together with that was included in the deed out from the, from the fire department. And so the first buyer bought the property, apparently realizing or not realizing that, that the seller didn't own all the property because of the reverter. Okay, and then apparently it transferred again. Now, I haven't done a title search, I don't know why that happened or how it got picked up. I don't know if it was a quitclaim deed, I don't know what happened. I don't even know if there was insurance on the title, on title. But what I do know is that, what happened is it was an automatic title reverter at that time. So there was no separate deed or any, any pieces of paper that needed to, to change hands.
Mr. Burton?
I just looked down the GIS, it's still, it's under private property, it's part of that main property, it's not a separate piece.
So under their deed, it looks as though they own it.
So it's been taxed.
Right, so we hope you can, like, so it's been taxed by that previous owner. So it didn't just revert back, there isn't just all this. So what I'm trying to get at, I'm trying to get to the bottom of this, and I'm having a hard, difficult time because other counselors are trying to speak while I have the floor at the same time. So this is a mess that's been since 2016, we're just trying to clean it up right now. We have to worry about trying to either sell it, but we also have to worry about fixing all these other title issues. There was obviously, somebody dropped the ball on a title search and everything you're discussing there, when the property's transferred, because these are things that they're supposed to pick up on as a map.
Between the parties, something was apparently missed.
No, I'm not saying on your part, I'm talking, there was something missed somewhere that, somebody missed something in the searches, I would assume.
But there's, there's a piece of land that the town has title to, and I guess it's smack in the middle of this particular property ownership. This, these people probably thought they bought it, but in fact, they didn't.
Right, gotcha. All right, so who's paying, let me ask you this. Who's paying for this appraisal on the property?
The, the 13 Fort Hill Road.
So the person that owns that property now, they're paying for the appraisal?
Correct.
Okay, and so what they're requesting right now is a quitclaim? Is that what they're asking for, that we fill out the quitclaim and just hand it over to them?
They were asking for a quitclaim of the property. They did not necessarily offer.
The quitclaim, I mean, the one that I have here, it's not actually, it says a dollar. The quitclaim, I mean, the one that I have here, it's not actually, it says a dollar?
Yes, for one dollar, statutory, statutory form of claim deed.
All right, and when do you expect the appraisal to come in?
Sometime in the next few weeks. I, I didn't order the appraisal, so they have, so we're kind of waiting on this, but they wanted to get the ball rolling on this process.
All right. I personally don't want to do anything until first I hear about the appraisal, and second, I want to get some more information on this property and to get the answers as to who's been paying taxes on it. And, and what, what's the next step on, if, if it's in their mortgage deed and all these other things, how is this all going to work for them? Because they basically, in their, I understand they don't own it, but in their paperwork and their title and everything, it's saying they do. So I'd like to figure out how we're gonna, this is going to be resolved and get more information on that. Thanks.
Okay, so we have Councilor Heath, and then I have some questions, and then we've got to kind of draw it back and figure out where we want to go with this.
Just wanted to, I started to ask and I didn't actually ask, have, has the town given land for a dollar in situations like this in the past? Or is this the first time this ever happened? Any idea?
I'm not entirely sure. Areas for right of ways, for, I don't know.
I, I don't know.
Okay, so we have a couple of moving parts we have to come to grips with here and decide what we want to do tonight.
I think we're looking for the best way to move forward on this. This was something that obviously got mixed up into a bit of a mess of no fault of, I think, anyone in this room. But it just was a clouded title, and we're trying to look for some direction of how you want to proceed.
So, so maybe I should just ask a series of simple questions. I'm assuming we want to move ahead with the appraisal, correct? Everyone is agreed that they're gonna go ahead with the appraisal?
Yeah.
Right. So the second thing, I have the floor, I'm sorry. The second thing is then, depending on how the appraisal comes back, if it comes back over $10,000, I've heard sentiment saying we want it sold for fair market value, I've heard, you know, questioning the dollar sale. So I think really we need to wait until we get the appraisal back before that decision would be made, unless you're willing to take a leap of faith and say, you know, give us a public hearing or whatever, so there's that issue. And then the third thing is, are we looking to move ahead with this now? And what kind of timeframe is the owner on? Are they, again, I'm, are we going to be holding anything up if we wait?
They have an approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission for their site plan.
They already have the approval?
Yes.
Okay. So then?
We can, if the council tonight wants to move forward, again, it won't be acted on until the April 7th meeting with the 824 referral. We can certainly get that ball rolling. And we can wait to see what happens with the appraisal, and then if there are questions that council members want us to look into in regards to who's been paying the taxes and anything else that comes up, that's something we can do a little bit of research.
Mr. Burton?
In terms of the taxes, it's being paid by the owner and the previous owner before that, it is part of the larger parcel and assessed as part of that.
Thank you.
So to expedite things for the current owner, we should move this ahead according to CGS 824, and also decide whether we want to have a public hearing if it comes in appraised under 10,000.
Correct.
Okay. Councilor Parker? Did you have, did you want to say something?
I do, I believe Councilor Bordelain was first.
Councilor Bordelain, Parker, then to Perry.
So I was going back, I apologize for interrupting, I thought you were asking, it seems a consensus we want them to go with the appraisal. I disagreed with that. I don't feel that they should be going forth with an appraisal without having the information that's come forward tonight. I think that they should be in the loophole legally to know what's going on with that property and what, how the deed and all this stuff is a little bit all over. I know I wouldn't want to go forth with appraisal not knowing all the backdrop on that. Once again, we weren't part of this, but if, since 2016, the firehouse closed when again?
Before, I want to say 14? I think it's closed before I started working for the town.
Right.
And the, their attorney is the one that requested this, so they're aware, not the firehouse, the, the current owner's attorney is aware of this issue and has requested that we bring this forward.
Okay. And my other thing is, because the map is somewhat clear, and I did go down to try to look, I kind of feel like we should have more time to kind of look at this parcel of land and really talk about the need versus the risk of the town, since it is part of, it's on the, right on the water, budding up to our walkway. I do think it should go to a public hearing, get to talk to people, I mean, it could be a sitting area, there's some other structures that could be done there. I think we really need to make sure we do our due diligence on this, and also if there's taxes owed to somebody, or, I, I don't, there's a whole bunch of things that are, just don't seem right to me. I don't feel like we're at any time ready to do anything with this at this time, in my opinion. I think we need more work, more time, I think we should table this, come back with more information, maybe have a, a meeting down there with, planning and, like, go down with somebody to show the markers of this land, look at these sheds, like, see the actual property. I feel like I'm making a decision without really seeing the land.
Councilor Parker?
And giving the town a fair shot to decide, is this something the town may need or want, considering it is up to coastal property? And people are interested in that, and that would be, I mean, what if, and there's got to be some contingency also, long-term, okay, we give them the land, we, we say we want to get rid of it for, you know, it's going to cost us to maintain it, but what are they going to be allowed to put there? We don't want to open up that door because it is on that walkway, up to coastal property, so I'm concerned about that as well, and I do think it should be fair market value, I don't agree with a dollar.
Councilor Parker?
Okay. Can, I understand that they've already potentially been paying property taxes on it already. So we still have to sell it? Is there a reason why we would still have to sell it to them if it's already included in their deed?
Because the person who gave them the deed didn't own the property.
Okay, but, the river, I understand that they reverted back to the town, but if they paid taxes and then we're going to have them, they're appraising it, so if it comes over the $10,000 mark, we have to send it to, per Connecticut state statute, refer it to the RTM so we can sell the property to them, to a property they probably were already paying taxes on, for potentially a dollar, which I actually don't have a problem with because potentially they could be paying taxes on a full property, the full lot, correct? Potentially.
Yes, again, we're talking about 1,300 square feet of land, the value of it is probably pretty low.
So I'm not sure that we should be doing it at fair market value, because I think we need more information. I understand that there's maybe a time crunch, so if we can find out all the information about the taxes, so that we have a better understanding of what's going on. Because if they, their appraisal comes over at 10,000, what if they've already paid up to $10,000 worth of taxes? For how many years have they owned this property? Just two years?
They've owned it for two years, right?
The previous owner.
Pars Venture Capital LLC.
How long, 13 Fort Hill LLC has owned it? June 25th, 2019, so they haven't even owned it for a year.
Okay.
They did pay 18 taxes, amount of $5,322.36, that's on the entire.
Could you repeat that again?
13 Fort Hill LLC paid $5,322.36 for the 2018 taxes. The year before that, Pars Venture Capital LLC paid pretty similar, $5,315, uh, three, $5,315.37.
But that's for the entire parcel?
That's for the entire parcel.
Not just that little tiny strip of land?
There'd be variable taxes on that one, please.
Okay, very good. Councilor Parker, did you have anything else, because we have other councilors?
No.
Councilor's Perry?
I'm curious, first of all, there's no doubt about the title. That property is the town of Groton's property. There's no, no, this, it's not hazy at all, it's the town of Groton's property. It reverted at the time that the, the Paquonic Bridge left, the fire department left. But the, the question I have is, how did we ever have a sliver of property like that that's not useful for anything? It sounds like it, another piece of property was cut off for, from it for another purpose. Did we actually cut off the property to give it to the Paquonic Bridge Fire Department so that they could put their fire engine, their fire station on the bigger piece of property to start with? I, I just don't understand how we got a sliver of land that's left and is not useful for anything?
I don't.
As a separate piece of land.
I, I think what happened is this small piece of property was cut off of the piece that the boardwalk is on.
So it was for getting access to the boardwalk?
That's what the ori-
I don't think it's for getting access, it just, it was just a piece left over.
I'm sorry?
It was just a piece of property that was not needed as part of the boardwalk property.
The boardwalk wasn't there.
It's still confusing, because I, I don't know how it would be cut up like that, but we'll let that be.
Councilor Melendez, I'm going to him because he hasn't spoken yet. Councilor Franco?
Sure.
Okay, so it seems to me that when the first person to buy the land, right, and they priced in that parcel as, and they thought they were buying that, that land, right? When they were buying it from the fire department? So they priced it in that, and also they had been paying taxes on it since then. So it seems to me that they are not the person who made a misstep here. It was the Paquonic Bridge Volunteer Fire Company who sold it without having the right to sell it. So it seems to me that it would, it would be unfair to make them pay for the land since they already bought it for what they thought it was worth with that land in there, and then have been paying taxes on it since then.
But that's, that's just how I feel.
So I, I want to speak and then we'll go back to you. The current owner wishes to have an appraisal done on this land, and they're going to pay for the appraisal.
Correct.
We are not going to stop them from appraising the land, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we will have an appraisal soon, we will have the fair market value of that piece of property.
Correct.
At that point, whatever we want to do with it, we have to decide if we're going to send this to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, correct?
Correct.
So we need to do that part of it. We need to send it to Planning and Zoning, regardless of how the appraisal comes in.
Correct.
Okay. So if we did that tonight, if we amended this and just sent it to Planning and Zoning tonight, and then we could wait on the result of the appraisal, would that be acceptable? I'm only seeing a couple heads nodding. Okay.
So you're saying wait on the dollar amount?
Hold on a second, because I'm going to, I'm going to come back to you and let you finish your question, I just want to clarify things. So the goal is to get this to Planning and Zoning, so this business owner can start moving ahead, but we need to wait on the appraisal value before we decide, before we know if it has to go to public hearing and the RTM or not.
Correct. And you don't have to approve any type of quitclaim deed until after you get the appraisal. The 824 referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission is looking at consistency with the plan of conservation and development.
Okay, so what I'm going to do, after, I recognize Councilor Franco because she's been waiting to ask her a question, is I'm going to move to amend this, just to strip it down so that we can get it to Planning and Zoning. Councilor Franco?
So Planning and Zoning, is this for the whole property, or is it just more or less the building?
Neither.
Just this little piece.
Just this little sliver. So Planning and Zoning has already approved a site plan for the property. When we send, when the town council sends, or 824 referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is looking at, is the sale of this property consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development?
Okay, so what's the rush that it has to go there? I don't understand. So it's not holding up development of the old firehouse and all that property, is that correct?
Well, I don't think the, I don't know if they're going to move forward or not, depend, I know that they're trying to get their title cleared.
Understood. I mean, there's a lot of issues here, and that's why I'm saying, I don't think it needs to be rushed to Planning and Zoning, because what is there to rush to? I don't get what you're saying. What is the rush to get there? What are you going to figure out when you get, when it gets there?
Well, they just have to review and say it's generally in line with the plan, because if we wait till after we get the appraisal and do everything else, it'll add another month onto the process. This is something that has to be done regardless of any other decisions, so you might as well just send it there. It's, it's a minor step.
Well, just to be clear, we haven't even-
And it has nothing to do with development plans.
But we haven't even decided if we're going to sell the property at all.
Right. But you're not bound to anything they do. They're just saying, if you wanted to sell, it would be in compliance with plan.
So if it's a-
I don't know, I think there's a lot of legal issues that are going on with this item, that those owners, not just the, the previous one and the current one, I mean, they were sold property that doesn't belong, I mean, there's sales issues here, there's title issues here, there's all kinds of issues that are going on with this thing, that are way, like, honestly, if I was getting a piece of property that I bought from Paquonic Bridge Fire District, and I thought I was getting bigger property, and I found out that I have to go jump through hoops, get appraisals, all this other stuff, I might get an attorney and start looking at the whole purchase process. So I don't know why we're rushing right now, because there's, there's a lot going on here. There's a lot going on here, and there's a lot of history that's probably going to be looked into as to what went wrong here. So I don't know why we are rushing to get this through the land use. I just don't get it. What is, what, can somebody answer this better? Like a really direct, like, this is why, like, this is the reason why we have to do this now, because there's a rush? And that we can't wait 30 days and get an appraisal and then get the information of really what's going on with this property? Other than, I mean, because it's not going to stop him from renovating the building or fixing the parking lot.
It may. If they don't have a clear title on the property, they may not want to pull a building permit and move forward. So it may. We're trying to move this forward.
Do you think that couldn't happen anyways? Do you think there might not be a legal standing that he has, that he may go back on the buyer, on the seller, and then they may go back on the previous seller? I mean, there's a lot going on here.
It's, it's true that there may be a dispute between the buyers and the sellers with respect to the title, and a way to clear that up would presumably be a quiet title action, but the quiet title action or the dispute between them is not going to resolve the fact that the town owns the land. The shortcut for the developer, in, in terms of fixing title and having title to what they expected to get, and also fixing it from the standpoint of getting financing for the property and having insurable title to what they, what they've got in the deed, the shortcut is to ask the town to deed them or sell them the property. I don't think they've said, we, we expect to get it for a dollar, I think they prepared a quitclaim deed in the ordinary course, and all forms of quitclaim deeds always say one dollar, another valuable consideration. So I don't think they're proposing that, hey, give it to us for free, thank you very much, we know we bought the Paquonic Bridge, you're, you're helping us. I think instead, they're just saying, look, we, we, it's important to us to resolve the title issue, we think, think we got it. If you don't have any need for it, we'd like to get it, let's do an appraisal, see what it looks like, and maybe we'll, we'll buy it for the appraised value. But in terms of approaching it step by step by step, the first step is the 824 approval, and by getting it or moving it in that direction, you're at least doing that step. And if you, and if, if John's right, you don't have any real, there's no real value to the property to the town from a practical standpoint, you're not losing anything by moving it that way, and you don't have to go forward, because you make the decision finally on it. And by the time that's happened, we'll have an appraisal, we'll have a better idea what the value is, and, and then you can make a, you know, a more informed decision. It may be worthwhile for them to come and explain it to you, but they'll be very embarrassed about why they, they purchased property they didn't own.
Okay. So the, the reason why this started is because their attorney approached the town. They drafted this letter and sent it to us, asking us to, to help them. So I'm going to make a motion to amend that reads, council, let's see, recommend a motion that the council refer the sale of the property to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review per Connecticut general statutes 824.
Second.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Heed. So right now, we are only discussing the amended motion. So is there any discussion on just the amendment? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the amendment, which is, um, recommending that the council refer the sale of this property to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review per CGS 824. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Franco and Bordelon abstentions. So we have six in favor, two opposed, Franco and Bordelon, and zero abstentions, so the amended motion passes. So then, when the appraisal is done, uh, we will hear about it, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. Is that all you needed from us this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so that was, Mr. Franco, so we're on to Counselor Heed. 2021-60 appointment of other attorneys on page 65, Counselor Heed.
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing other attorneys as recommended by town attorney Eileen Dugan, I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed, seconded by Parker, any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2021-60 appointment of other attorneys, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight. And we are on to item 5I, 2021-57 Tax Appeals, Fuel Cell Energy Incorporated and Pfizer Incorporated, and, um, this is a potential executive session, Mr. Burt, or, um, Counselor Parker?
Um, should we make a motion, because are we going to go past 10 o'clock?
Well, right now, it's only 9:53, so we have seven minutes before we have to make that motion.
But, we're going to enter into executive session?
Correct.
So we may not have the time to do it before we end it?
Would you like to make that motion?
I forgot how to make it.
Counselor Parker would like, um, to get consensus to continue past 10 o'clock to conclude the agenda. Is there any objection? I see no objection, very good. All right, so, Mr. Burt, did you want to give a, a quick, um, I can read it. The town council will be updated by town attorneys on tax appeals involving Fuel Cell Energy Incorporated and Pfizer Incorporated, and we have our attorneys and assessors with us here this evening. I hereby move that the members of the town council committee of the whole, town manager John Burt, tax assessor Mary Gardner, finance director Cindy Landry, assistant town manager Bob Zagami, who is not with us this evening, so I'm going to take that out, please, strike that, attorney Eric Callahan, and attorney Rich Cody go into executive session for soon to general statute section 1206B for the purpose of discussing strategy and negotiations related to pending litigation and/or pending claims concerning tax appeals filed by Fuel Cell Energy Incorporated and by Pfizer Incorporated. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Heed, all those in favor of going into executive session for the stated purpose, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, we are in executive session at 9:55.